One minute?
Yes.
Hmm? Yeah, oh, I thought I smelled something. It's the weather, I think. It just makes everything a little musty at this time.
I'd like to bring to call to order for our city commission meeting, regular city commission meeting for June 6th, 2017. If the city clerk could do the roll call, please.
Commissioner Battle.
Here.
Commissioner Drosky.
Here.
Commissioner Parnas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Mayor Gantz.
Here. If everyone could please stand for a moment of silence and then we're going to do the pledge of allegiance led by our veteran here on the commission, Commissioner Parnas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has anyone heard from Commissioner or Vice Mayor Miller?
No.
Okay, hopefully he's all right. I'd like to have the approval of city commission minutes for regular city commission meeting minutes for May 16th, 2017.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say nay. Not seeing anyone approve unanimously. I'd like to acknowledge the city board minutes for the community appearance board minutes of April 12th and May 10th, 2017, as well as the non-uniform employees retirement committee meeting minutes for March 13th, 2017.
Motion to acknowledge.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Not seeing anyone oppose. It is approved unanimously. I'd like to have the approval of the city commission agenda for June 6th, 2017.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Welcome, Vice Mayor Miller. We were concerned. Glad you're here. Right now, I'd like to do a certificate of recognition for two of our great service organizations that we have here in the city of Deerfield Beach. If you bear with me one moment, but we would like to recognize a certificate of recognition presented to the Kiwanis Club and Kiwanis West of Deerfield Beach for their outstanding volunteer efforts and charitable donations to programs and events throughout the city of Deerfield Beach. The Kiwanis, bear with me one moment here. Many people don't realize that we do have two Kiwanis organizations here in the city of Deerfield Beach. The Kiwanis Club of Deerfield Beach was established 60 years ago and currently has 54 members from all walks of life that are a committed group of caring volunteers. The members volunteer at numerous events throughout the city each year, including Relay for Life, Adopt a Street Cleanup and Christmas in July, which helps provide items for the homeless. They have a strong presence in the local schools, running reading programs in Northeast Focal Point, Deerfield Park Elementary and Park Ridge Elementary. They also volunteer at Deerfield Beach High School and Somerset Key Academy Key Clubs. In addition to their volunteer efforts, the Kiwanis Club provides charitable donations to local programs and events through the years such as National Night Out, Shop with the Cop, Deerfield Beach Little League, the Honor Flight, Student Government Day, and SOS Children's Village, to name a few. Their charitable donations go beyond program and events. They provide donations to numerous local school programs, including Deerfield Beach Middle School Autism Classes, Deerfield Beach Elementary Autistic Cluster, Quiet Waters Elementary's Robotics Club, and donating summer reading books to all kindergarten students, including preschools, and scholarships to graduating high school seniors in Deerfield Beach. The city would like to recognize and thank the Kiwanis Clubs of Deerfield Beach for their volunteer efforts and charitable donations for our community. The current officers include President Kenny Brighton, if you could come up, Secretary Andrea Brower, Treasurer Tammy Davis, President-elect Kerry Gordon, and immediate past president Gordon Batch. If you could all come forward, please. Kiwanis West of Deerfield Beach, Kiwanis West of Deerfield Beach began as a club 22 years ago on June 4th, 1994, and currently consists of 18 members who are dedicated to volunteering and serving their community. This dedication can be seen through the numerous events and programs which members volunteer for, such as the Easter Extravaganza, the Martin Luther King Jr. Brunch and Parade, and Relay for Life, to name a few. Not only do the members volunteer at events, programs, but they're also visible at local schools, participating in the Broward Sheriff's Office Back to School Program and running the Kiwanis Reading Oasis at Park Ridge Elementary School, where the volunteers read to the students. However, their contribution to the community does not stop there. They also support the community and community organizations such as charitable donations. Some of the programs and organizations they support include Deerfield Beach Historical Society, Christmas in July, National Night Out, and Broward Sheriff's Office, Christmas Shopping. But their charitable contributions still go even further, contributing to the community and community organizations into the school system, donating summer reading books to graduating kindergarten students and dictionaries of Deerfield Beach 3rd graders, as well as scholarships to graduating seniors. Most recently, they held a teacher appreciation dinner honoring 12 teachers from Deerfield Beach's schools. The city would like to recognize and thank Kiwanis West of Deerfield Beach for their volunteer efforts and charitable donations to our city. The current offices include President Rhoda Sokoloff, Secretary Ginger Hamilton, Treasurer Velamina Williams, and President-elect Tracy Williams. If all members of Kiwanis could please come to the front, please. On behalf of the city of Deerfield Beach, we thank you for all of your contributions. We'll bring you all up here. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Tim, would you like to say?
Of course, thank you so much.
Who's Tracy? Who's Kiwanis West?
Absolutely. You're going to have to...
All the shorter posts.
Keep pointing it out. I'll take my shoe off.
A little bit to the left. Everybody one step forward.
Sure.
Kick the other one off.
It's okay. I just need to have one.
Say when.
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 Make an ugly face.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, where was Mr. Snack and Bird?
Interesting.
Oh, yeah.
I got this crap.
Next, on our agenda, we have a presentation by Kathy Wesley of Broward County Human Services, Administrator for Family Success.
Good evening, thank you.
Yes, please. You name an address for the record, please.
Kathy Wesley, 2011 Northwest 3rd Avenue, Pompano Beach, Florida 3306. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, for inviting me today to Deerfield Beach, Commissioner Drosky. I'd like to talk to you about a program that's not that well-known in Broward County. So, we're having a campaign to get the word out. Broward County Human Services Family Success Administration Division. Our vision is a cohesive community where all residents are self-sufficient. Our mission is to provide assistance to individuals and families in achieving economic self-sufficiency. Family Success offers services to Broward County residents through the following programs: the Family Success Centers, Community Action Agency, and Housing Options. Family Success has four centers that provide emergency financial assistance, EA, self-sufficiency case management, known as SSCM, to Broward County residents. Family Success also manages grant-funded programs that provide financial assistance to qualified residents. Centers are located in Fort Lauderdale, Carl Springs, Hollywood, and Pompano. Assistance from the Family Success Centers is allowed one time within a 24-month period and no more than three times in a lifetime. When assistance is given using emergency food and shelter grant, the criteria is just a little different. Based on the applicable year's fair market rent per month, to rent or mortgage payments for persons who have experienced 10% or more loss of income in the past six months due to no fault of their own, the residents must meet qualifications that include a sustainability plan to meet rent or mortgage after assistance is offered. A minimum of three months residency is required. Utility assistance, we offer a max of $500. Across the top is the fair market rate for the one-bedroom, two-bedroom, up to four-bedrooms, what we will assist with. Self-sufficiency case management may provide additional rent assistance, as well as childcare, food, transportation assistance, while helping customers to develop a sustainability plan, providing education and budgeting, credit repair, and assessing mainstream resources. Family Success North Center is located in Pompano, provides both emergency assistance, self-sufficiency case management. We also house a branch of the Health Department, Elderly and Veteran Services Division, Community Action Agency, which houses the community service block grant dollars, financial literacy. Since the making of this presentation, we've added legal aid, harmony, development, and crisis housing solution for folk who have mortgages. The Northwest Center is located in Carl Springs. It provides also emergency assistance, self-sufficiency case management. On-site representatives and services include mortgage foreclosure assistance, legal aid, elderly and veteran services, WIC offices, crisis housing solution, and Community Access Center. The Community Access Center assists with things like applying for public benefits, Medicaid. The South Center is located in West Park. It also provides emergency assistance, self-sufficiency case management. We have Broward Addiction Recovery Center and legal aid at that center. And then the Fort Lauderdale office provides emergency assistance, self-sufficiency case management. It also houses Community Action Agency Housing Options Program, and the Health Department, Elderly and Veteran Services, Broward Addiction and Recovery. So, you can call our centers a one-stop shop. We try to provide a number of wraparound services for residents of Broward County. Community Action Agency, known as CAA, the main office is in Fort Lauderdale in the Mills Center. CAA manages the low-income home energy assistance program, also known as LAHEEP. Residents have to be at 150% or below the poverty level. LAHEEP applicants may receive electric assistance three times per year, beginning in April to March of the following year. So, home energy assistance every 12 months, $150 up to $425. April to September, which is summer crisis, it requires a final notice, and it can be used for deposits and up to $600. October to March, which is the winter crisis, requires also a final notice, or we can pay for deposits up to $600. Payments per household are contingent upon the type of benefits received by household members. Crisis payments are for past due amounts minus utility allowance, if applicable. CAA also is home to the community service block grant funding. Services provided include education, training, books, tools, childcare, bus passes. Clients are accepted on an income basis, 125% of the poverty level or below, with a strong desire to achieve. Housing Options Program offers programs intended to prevent or to end homelessness to low-income families and individuals. Assistance with case management, move-in expenses is needed to house a family while they address barriers to housing stability. HOP also manages two HUD-funded programs for individuals who are homeless, who suffer with substance abuse disorders. Limited funding is available to hotel placement when access to emergency shelters is unavailable. Housing Options also has a program called Family Reunification Program. This program offers a one-way bus fare ticket to a Broward County resident who's homeless and has no other local resources. We will transport that individual or family to other family or individuals outside of Broward County who may be willing to provide them with a home. Asset for Independence, our AFFI program, the Individual Development Account Program. Broward County is the fiscal agent, and it's a collaboration with the Urban League of Broward County. The IDA program, Individual Development Account Program, is designed to increase knowledge and wealth in the low-income community by providing a two-to-one match savings that will allow residents to purchase their first home. An $8 to one match to continue post-secondary education, and a $4 to one match to establish a small business. Several financial literacy workshops are held to encourage good budgeting and saving techniques. This program usually lasts, depending upon the resident. It could go anywhere from a month to three months. What happened? That's it? Are there any questions?
Commissioner Drosky, I know you sponsored this. Do you have any comments on it?
I met Mrs. Wesley at one of my Saturday meetings in May, actually, and it was a program that I knew little about, and I thought it would be very worthwhile for her to come to our commission meeting and to speak about it and present to us what's available right here in Broward County that most people don't even know. So, I appreciate you coming this evening and giving us a presentation about your program.
Thank you for having me. I have left a goodie bag with the clerk, with fans, brochures, all kinds of things, information about the program. Thank you for having me.
Commissioner Battle, you have a question?
Yes, I do have a question. I am very familiar with your programs, and I just have a question because the, as I'm thinking about it, and I just finished talking to some people, the rate that they're paying nowadays for, for instance, for a one-bedroom apartment far exceeds that which you are able to give in terms of assistance. Are they able to match other assistance from your program in order to be helped?
In terms of rent assistance, we will reach out to other resources, other partners, to help match the dollars that we can't if a customer does not have the ability, yes.
Okay, that's always been a concern of mine about all of those programs, one way or the other. And my other question is, for some, well, do you know how many of my residents, for instance, have availed themselves of your programs in the past? Have any idea?
I wish I had brought that with me. Deerfield is number two in using our services.
Okay, thank you.
And you are through Broward County, is that correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have city staff. Eric Powers to come up and talk about Broward next.
Good evening. Eric Power, Director of Plan Development Services. I was asked to come speak today to the commission to discuss Broward Next program. Back in 2014, Broward County decided that they wanted to reevaluate their comprehensive plan in a holistic nature. They looked at every aspect of it. Back when the plan was first implemented, back in the early 1970s, 1977 and 1989, were the major changes. And Broward County was still a very suburban area. Broward County, most of its cities, of course, were dealing with transportation issues, cars, single-family homes, things of that nature. But over time, things have changed. And so, Broward County has now looked at additional elements for their comprehensive plan to affect today's society. Those items are the climate change, targeted redevelopment, natural resource protection, multimodal transportation, affordable housing, disaster planning recovery, and a renewed partnership of intergovernmental relationships between Broward County and municipalities. So, the policies that were...
Thank you for having me. I have left a goodie bag with the clerk, with fans, brochures, all kinds of things, information about the program. Thank you for having me.
Commissioner Battle, you have a question?
Yes, I do have a question. I am very familiar with your programs, and, and I just have, have a question because the, as I'm thinking about it, and, and I, I just finished talking to some people, the, the rate that they're paying nowadays for, instance, for a one-bedroom apartment
Yes.
far exceeds that which you are able to give in terms of assistance. Are they able to match other assistance from your program in order to be helped?
In terms of rent assistance, we will reach out to other resources, other partners, to help match the dollars that we can't if a customer does not have the ability, yes.
Okay, that's always been a concern of mine about all of those programs, one way or the other. And my other question is, for some, well, do you know how many of, of my residents, for instance, have, have availed themselves of your programs in the past?
Dear.
Have any idea?
Um, I wish I had brought that with me. Deerfield is number two in using our services.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
And you are through Broward County, is that correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have city staff. Eric Powers to come up and talk about Broward Next.
Good evening. Eric Powers, Director of Plan Development Services. I was asked to come speak today to the commission to discuss Broward Next program. Back in 2014, Broward County decided that they wanted to reevaluate their comprehensive plan in a holistic nature. They looked at every aspect of it. Back when the plan was first implemented, back in the early 1970s, 1977 and 1989 were the major changes. And Broward County was still a very suburban area. Broward County, most of its cities, of course, were dealing with transportation issues, cars, single-family homes, things of that nature. But over time, things have changed. And so Broward County has now looked at additional elements for their comprehensive plan to affect today's society. Those items are the climate change, targeted redevelopment, natural resource protection, multimodal transportation, attainable housing, disaster planning recovery, and a renewed partnership of intergovernmental relationships between Broward County and municipalities. So the policies that were, that resulted in this review, there was over 80 meetings between Broward County and the municipalities and residents. They had an email list of all over 15,000 people in which they were constantly communicating with who signed up for this program to be notified about it. So the policies that came forward were to support a climate action plan, a county-wide plan, support smart growth policies, redevelopment programs, complete street incentives initiatives, and historic resources, attainable housing, which is a new word from affordable housing, they've changed it to attainable housing, reform the land use plan, which some will talk about in a second, and to increase the platting exemption from five to 10 acres. The last two items are probably the items that are, I guess, the things that will happen to most municipalities or things you'll notice the most between the two of us when I come back and forth talking about land use plan amendments we'll be doing. The, the reasons for those changes are, they're basically collapsing the land uses. So instead of having multiple land uses, you know, commercial this, commercial that, residential multi, residential, you know, single-family, residential multifamily, this type of thing, they're making these just a little bit simpler. So from now on, residence, non-residential is just called commerce. So there's no industrial, there's no commercial, it's just commerce. They're changing community facilities to utilities. Mixed use is now an activity center. Recreation open spaces now public use. Municipal plans are allowed to be more restrictive. We are not required to necessarily change our comprehensive plan if it still falls within the concept of Broward County's land use plan, but we have the ability to change our plan if we want to make it, I say, simpler for, for the city to do. So here is a, a copy of the, the land use plan map. Just, just two copies here, just Deerfield Beach has been cut out. So the very top is the existing, and the, the bottom is the proposed. And if you can notice the difference, the purple and the red, that's the, those are the biggest changes you're going to notice. So right now, in Deerfield Beach, these are industrial areas, industrial corridors. The land use plan will be changed to basically show them as just being commerce corridors. So there is no distinction as far as Broward County now is concerned between a place like the, the JM family, you know, international corporate area, which is a, you know, industrial road for us, industrial zoning district for us, now it's just commerce. So what, what does that mean really for us, and how's that going to work? Well, so it was adopted back in April. It's actually was just, the resolution occurred just this past week, June 2nd. And there is going to be an implementation plan, implementation document that'll be set forth from Broward County to all municipalities within Broward County that will discuss the actions that each municipality has the, the choice to take. Remember, cities can be more restrictive than the county if we choose to be. So if we want to take some of these actions and bring them forward, these are things that we'll be discussing. You're going to be seeing me again is really much the reason why I'm here tonight to tell you that we will be having some of these meetings, again, these conversations, again, to discuss the possibility of changing our comprehensive plan and changing our land use plan to either meet or match the Broward County plan. And that's what I just said. So, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Anyone from the commission have any questions? Thank you, Eric, appreciate it. City Attorney, Mr. City Attorney, can you please read the audience to be heard rules?
Yeah, that is the audience to be heard. There'll be three minutes with the authority of the mayor to add an additional minute. It's on solely on non-agenda items, and no comments shall be made related to the personal life or personal qualities of any person, and no language which would offend persons of ordinary sensibility shall be permitted.
Like to open up to the public? Anyone like to speak from the public? Please come up. If you just say your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Christine Wartman, 2922 Deer Creek Country Club Boulevard in Deerfield Beach.
May I pull the mic closer? Thank you.
The, my development is Arbor Green. I feel very miniscule after such articulate presentations that were just given, but I have a little request. We have been living here for 13 years. We are avid beachgoers. My husband is also an avid fisherman. So our resident sticker that goes on our car usually ends up in a marina, and I can't get to the beach without my resident pass. I am just requesting that you get a second pass for a family that has already paid $100 at a reduced fee. I think that, I was told when I asked for another pass that I had to pay another $100, but I thought it would be legitimate request to say if we paid the 100 and then get another pass for 50, or whatever number you gentlemen decided on. That's my big presentation. Any questions?
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. I don't think it would just be gentlemen making that decision.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Anyone else from the public, please?
Yes.
Our former state representative, Ms. Gwen Clark-Reed.
Gwen Clark-Reed, 1430 Southwest 6th Way, Deerfield Beach. I want to ask the city manager, did we have someone attending the South Florida Regional Council Conference on the Census yesterday?
Not that I'm aware of, but someone from staff could have been there. I'm not sure, Eric, if anyone from your department or, yeah.
Okay, I was there, and so was Mr. Scott as community people. We were there. I would strongly suggest that we get started on what's happening with the census. I know it sounds like it's quite a distance away, but things are going to be happening, and particularly in the month of July, when the mayor will be receiving information about it, as we were told yesterday. And I would truly like to say that if there is any way that the community needs to be involved, please let us know, because we definitely want to be counted, every person in the next census. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Just for the record, I did have all the staff at the strategic planning session, as you all know, so.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission. My name is Joe Hines. I'm at 559 Northwest 47th Terrace. Back on April 4th, there was an item on the agenda. It was pulled, and I'd like the city, I'd hope the city would revisit it. It was the item number eight, which was on door-to-door solicitations and canvassing. The backup for that was quite extensive and well-done. Thank you, Andy. And it's a, it really goes to free speech in our country. While canvassing or politicking or running for office, I had people that told me I shouldn't be there and what have you, and I graciously left. There was no signs or anything like that, just knock on the door, but there was a lot of people invited me in, too. Everybody ought to be able to hear from everybody that's running for office in this city at any time. They shouldn't be excluded for, and there shouldn't be board members somewhere telling the whole community, as, as happened in my neighborhood, you know, five men telling 258 people that this one fellow is putting door hangers on the doors, is, is, you know, breaking the law, breaking the rules of our association, what have you. An ordinance by the city, as this was written, would help, you know, stop that problem. And I wish you folks would take a real hard look at it and validate locally what the Supreme Court has done nationally. Second thing, I think we all, a bunch of us attended the DOT hearing, or whatever you want to call it, over at the hotel back in April, and most people showed up, I think, were like I was, thought we were talking about the sawgrass, I-95 expansion, and what we were, what was really on display was just I-95. I don't know if the city has really taken, and maybe you have, you know, maybe this side of ignorance on my part, but I don't think the city has taken any lead on how that road is to be developed. Folks tell me it's just going to be a, an elevated highway across there, and I wish the city would take a look at that tunnel that was mentioned, and think of how a tunnel would impact this city if all that traffic disappeared at the turnpike and, and rose back up around Military Trail and all the surface traffic didn't even know it was there. I wish the city would, would look at that and maybe take a proactive approach on that, because the DOT is having another hearing sometime in August, and, and I would like the city to be proactive on this situation. One other thing that I'd like to show you, I, I did a, a public records request, and I got the, this document here, this is municipal firefighters fund, ending October 1st of 2016. And if you turn it back in, back there about page 27, I believe it is, it shows that the average firefighter right now is earning $117,000 a year, and every year they get 5%. Contract comes up around 2020, and that's going to be another 15% on that, so they're going to make it close to $130,000. I think, I wish y'all would take a look at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Hello, Commissioners and Mayor, my name is Dan Hers, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. I spent over three hours yesterday attending the city of Deerfield Beach City Commission Strategic Planning Workshop. I was hoping to hear more concrete discussion from the Commissioners and city department heads about the Pioneer Grove Dixie Highway Corridor Development. Is the city planning to spend millions on infrastructure and hope multifamily and businesses will relocate there? Or is the city willing to give waivers on development fees or forego property taxes to encourage development? I heard very little discussion on this, other than the mayor saying we don't need tax incentives to lure people. Well, there hasn't been much development in the area over the last 15 years unless you count the Dixie Highway flyover, which I think was much more a benefit to Boca Raton than Deerfield Beach. Why are tax incentives not okay for the Pioneer Grove Dixie Business Corridor, but it is okay to spend $1.7 million of taxpayer money to buy a few slivers of beach property? Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Yeah, Dave Morantz, 9841 Riverside Drive, Carl Springs, Florida. I'd like to commend the commission and the leadership. You know, everybody up there was elected to take a leadership role, and I thought the time spent at the strategic planning session yesterday was well-invested. You know, one of the unintended, the law of unintended results with regard to the sunshine laws is that Commissioners don't have an opportunity to discuss their individual views with each other unless it's under a, a public announced meeting. And I give you credit for compressing the amount of time it would take for the new commission members to get to know the existing ones, and, and for the city staff to be able to be a part of the process. So I think it's, was time and energy well-spent by the leadership here, and I commend you on the approach. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Thank you. Jerry Lee, 4311 Crystal Lake Drive. First, I want to say bravo to Mr. Joe Miller. At the last council meeting concerning the matter of waste and recycling, Mr. Miller portrayed the type of courageous leadership that the people need, admire, and fully support. Mr. Miller mentioned how several years ago, Deerfield Beach was the leader of municipalities regarding recycling efforts, that we should return to this leadership position among the municipalities, and perhaps even provide a model to the nation. Bravo. There are too many brilliant minds cultivating in our younger generations, and too many advances in technology for us not to create better packaging products, packaging products and recycling processes by now. And I support you fully and hope you continue to press forward. Now, I would like you and council to extend this type of courageous leadership and apply it to another matter. But first, it is very important that we realize and accept the fact there is much more value to an affordable public golf course than the actual monetary revenues that are produced. And if you are unable to acknowledge this, I really believe you're unfit to be on this council. Now, I want to clarify the status of Deer Creek Country Club. Yes, this golf course is available to the public, but the core foundation of that club is the semi-private membership. That means for the price for the public to play is extremely high. 90% of your citizens will never even consider to play golf at their prices. This is the one golf club for the wealthy. Not having time to discuss the travesty that is occurring in the largely gated, 55-plus retirement community in Century Village, where the last of their golf courses are planned to be annihilated, where vivaciousness has diminished, where property values have drastically been reduced with no hopes to return, especially without a golf course. All that possibly remains for Deerfield Beach is Crystal Lake Golf Club, the last affordable, truly public golf club. Now tomorrow morning, I would like you to call for an emergency moratorium on the construction that has begun on the driving range portion of Crystal Lake Golf Course. Pay the appropriate settlement to the developers. Reclaim all the land back to commercial recreational, and then place a referendum on the property to forever hereon be used solely as a golf course. Now, I would like to discuss our past election cycles. Mayor Gans, you mentioned at a Democratic Club meeting that during your past campaign for the nonpartisan position of mayor, the nonpartisan position of mayor, you encountered more partisan anger from the people during this election cycle than ever before. You attributed this anger, anger resulting from the recent presidential processes in Washington, DC. Mayor Gans, is this a fair summary of what you said? Is that a fair summary?
I'll let you continue.
I would like to focus that attention as to how this anger is deeply rooted within the local government processes.
Anyone else in the public care to speak? Could enclose the public hearing to speak?
We have, ma'am, we have two quasi-judicial hearings.
Before we move forward on that, just to address a couple of things, because we're always told that we don't reply to some of the things that are said. For the first lady who spoke, that's something we can consider for the budget when it comes to our beach parking stickers. You know, obviously, we've all heard that, and that's something for us to consider. Just to give you a little history lesson on it, the beach parking sticker is something that is sometimes controversial, and which people don't agree with the price, but then others disagree that we even offer one because they feel that we're losing revenue on parking. So that suggestion that you made might be controversial in itself, but it's, it's well-taken. So thank you. State Representative Clark Reed, former State Representative Clark Reed, thank you so much for your comments on the census. That is something that's very important to the city of Deerfield Beach, and obviously it's important for our residents to know how important the census is to us as a city. So as we move forward in that process, I have no doubt that we'll be following that closely. As far as the city not taking a proactive position or a leadership position on 10th Street, with all due respect, that's absolutely unbelievable for someone to state, because I can promise you, and the record will show, that the city of Deerfield Beach has taken more than a leadership position when it comes to 10th Street. The COAT Committee was served for a year and a half of volunteers, consisting primarily of people from the city of Deerfield Beach, that I was a part of and spent countless hours, as well as Commissioner Drosky as a private citizen, and others within the community participating in that, for a year and a half, just in that process alone, should tell you that we're, we've taken more than a leadership position on 10th Street. If you haven't seen the plans, or you don't understand what's being considered, I encourage you to go to the MPO's web, Broward MPO's website, and refer it yourself, and take a look at the plans that are being proposed. While it's not necessarily a plan, you get an idea of the direction in which they're going in based on the discussions, the minutes, and the presentations that have been made. So we are more than aware of what's happening. As far as I-95, as well as the sawgrass, the connection between the sawgrass and the turnpike, those are two separate projects on top of this third 10th Street project the city of Deerfield Beach is watching very closely, because it certainly impacts the residents and our businesses here in the city of Deerfield Beach. So we are aggressively and religiously monitoring that. As far as our strategic planning meeting, our strategic planning meeting, as was discussed and mentioned several times when we tried to get into specifics, was meant to be about a 30,000-feet view of things and not to get into the nitty-gritty specifics. One of the reasons why is because they wanted a general direction from the commission to give guidance to staff, that's why. give guidance to staff, that's why we had all of staff there, so they can come back with action plans to fulfill and meet what the city commission's goal was. Have I accurately described the way that process went? The, as far as regarding the actual, as a golf course, thank you for the comments.
Quasi judicial hearings are for items four and five. Is anyone who's going to testify on either one of those items, would you please stand and let me administer the oath? Items four and five, do you solemnly swear the testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Okay. I'm gonna offer each applicant the opportunity to waive the quasi judicial hearing that we afford people, you are permitted to waive it. When you waive the quasi judicial hearing, you are waiving the formal hearing with its right of cross-examination, it's a much stiffer proceeding. Without the quasi judicial hearing, you still have the opportunity to present your case and have the first and last word, but it will not be the formal procedure. So, when you come up here, I'll ask the applicant who the representative is, and whether they wish to waive the quasi judicial hearing. First case is item four, it's John A. Grant Jr. on behalf of Joseph Morrow. Would you please step forward, identify yourself, and indicate whether you wish to waive the quasi judicial hearing?
Good evening, my name is Keith Grant with John Grant Engineers and Land Surveyors. I live at 916 Southeast 14th Court here in town. And I would just like to speak very briefly about the project, and that's all.
So, are you waiving the full quasi judicial?
Yes.
You are waiving it, thank you, sir.
Your turn.
This project is a eight-unit townhome, or eight-unit apartment house over on State Road A1A, Northeast 21st Avenue. Several months ago, the state had started the project over on A1A, expanding the pedestrian-friendly sidewalks, and just making everything much better for traffic over there, and safer. And in so doing, our apartment house lost their parking space, all 10 of them. And we are now proposing to put nine spaces back, eight regular spaces, and one handicap space. And if you, I'm here to answer any other questions that you may have for this project, and that'll be it.
Anyone from the Commission care to speak before we open it to the public regarding this? Vice Mayor Miller?
Did I hear you correctly that you lost all your spaces?
Yes, yes, we did.
So, currently, where are you parking?
They, all the spaces were perpendicular to A1A, and the residents are still parking there perpendicular to A1A, and we're trying to get them paved back now with this plan.
Because if you didn't do that, you wouldn't have any place to park.
That's correct.
Commissioner Drosky, my apologies.
I, I just want to be clear, and the city attorney can, can help me elaborate, but the, the taking by FDOT, this isn't your, your typical variance. This isn't, this isn't your mother's variance that I'm so hard on, on other, other cases, that the taking by FDOT automatically assumes a hardship. So, there's no hardship for us to find, a hardship is automatically to be found in this particular case.
I think the Commissioner is correct. This is, this is quite close to being considered what we would call ministerial. When these facts exist under our code, they are, there's basically an entitlement to the variance. Obviously, this was not his, the owner's doing, and so we provided for that at the request of FDOT. This was done in cooperation with them. So, really, this, this constitutes almost a ministerial duty to grant.
Right, so I just wanted to be clear that this is, this is a different
Absolutely.
... type of variance than from what we're going to hear, either in the next case or other cases that are brought before the Commission.
Correct, this is, this is a unique situation, and the ones that fit into this, but there's very few, yes.
Like to open it up to public comment? Anyone from the public care comment? Not seeing anyone, and then close the public portion to be heard. I'm sorry, you're gonna have to come back up there. While this isn't procedural, and this, this obviously, Commissioner Drosky brings a very good point, the city attorney, this is something that is not by your doing, this is not your typical variance, and I'm sure if you had it your way, it would not have happened in the first place, but, so if we could have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, and I think if I heard correctly, the representative here is happy that we have a bike-friendly and a traffic-friendly and new paving, but he just likes his parking back.
Yes.
If I understand, so I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please have a roll call?
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes, pass unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five is the applicant here, and would you identify yourself and indicate whether you wish to waive the quasi judicial proceeding?
Good evening, Duane Dickerson, I'm behalf of the applicant, attorney with the law from Dana Miskel Backman, offices at 14 Southeast 4th Street in Boca Raton, Florida, and yes, I do wish to waive the quasi judicial proceeding.
As you recall, Commissioner, this is a reopening of the hearing on the variance request for the Ocean Breeze Development, and so this is an opportunity to supplement the record, and for those parties who are on the other side to offer any new testimony with regard to what is being used to supplement the record. So, we'll allow council to present its case.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. So, this evening, the applicant is Ocean Breeze 777, Inc. That's the development team for this project, and it consists of two families. Both families are here this evening. The first family is the Degler family, they're represented by Randy and Laura Degler, and then also the second family is the Radisson family, and they're represented tonight by Dan Radisson, they're in the audience with me tonight. And then the architect for the project, Architect of Record, is Jack Hawke. The project's also known as Ocean Breeze or Oceans 20. The subject site is located just south of Hillsborough Boulevard on the east side of A1A. As you can see, it's designated on your screen in the red box and the yellow. That used to be two single-family lots, it was combined as part of this development project. And then as you can see, the home to the north with the pinkish roof is the Radisson family's home, and they do intend to stay and be adjacent and neighbors to the development. One other thing I want you to note from this aerial is, as you all know the area, this, see, this were three single-family lots, and they're the only single-family lots in that entire area, specifically east of A1A. So, it is a unique situation. Everything else around there, as you know, is the RM 25 or higher. The land use for the property is residential high, which is the 25 dwelling units per acre. The zoning matches the land use at RM 25. And then the acreage of the property, the gross acreage is approximately .39 acres, and that's once you combine the two lots together. This is a picture of the existing conditions. As you can tell, it's an urban infill and fairly blighted area. Those are the two homes, the pinkish home is on the left, which is the north side, and then the home, the white home is on the right, which is the south side. Additional view of, of the two lots. And that is the home that's on the south side. The requested site plan is allowing for a multifamily residential development. The development totals five stories in height and eight total units for the property. The ground floor is parking, and then the four stories above that would be the residential development. Each story or floor has two units per floor, so the fourth floor is times two is the eight. And then the maximum height is 55 feet, and as you all are aware, in the RM 25, 55 feet is permitted by right and by code, so we're not asking for any height variances or any deviations from the height with respect to what code allows. One other thing I wanted to note on this slide is that by right at the .39 acres times a 25, they would be permitted approximately 9.75 units, but to make sure that it was compatible and consistent with the area, they did minimize it to the eight units total, which, which fits. This is a color rendering, so you can see, in this rendering, you can clearly see the ground floor parking, and then the four stories, that's if you're on A1A looking east towards the beach. So, you can see very high-quality development, a lot of window treatments, cobblestone, and, and you know, very, very high-quality development in materials. In addition to the site planned, we are requesting five variances. Three are, or two are side setback variances, one is a rear setback variance, one is a setback variance for the pool, and then the last one is a landscape buffer on the north side setback variance. So, I'll go through them one by one and tell you exactly what we're asking for, what the code requires. The first variance is the north side setback variance. The code in the RM 25 requires a 10-foot setback. Now, it also is another provision in the RM 25 code that says, once you go over 20 feet in height, you are required to provide an additional one foot of setback for every two feet above that 20 feet in height. So, that required column, you see the normal setback is 10 for the first one, we are proposing 10 feet 6 inches. So, we are actually proposing more setback than what is typically required by that section. However, once you go over the 20 feet in height, that kicks in an additional 17 feet 6 inches, which takes the total requirement per the code at 27 feet 6 inches. So, we're providing 10.6 on that first one, and required by code is 27 feet 6 inches. That's very similar on the south side setback, code requires 10 normally, then once you add that additional height over the 20 feet, that takes it to a requirement of 27 feet 6 inches, and on the south side, we are proposing 13 feet 7 eighths inches. And then the rear setback is 15 feet, also has that same requirement over 20 feet, it's one additional setback for every two feet in height. So, that then requires us to go from 15 to 32 6. So, we are providing the intent of the 15, but the additional height takes us to a requirement of 32 feet 6 inches. The fourth variant is regarding the rear setback, and that's for the swimming pool. The requirement is 7 feet 6 inches, and we're at 7 feet. And that is to accommodate the pool and make sure things lay out the way they need to lay out. And then the final variance is to, because of the development, we are required to have an emergency sidewalk leaving the building, and so on the, on the bottom-left corner, which would be the, the northwest corner of the site, there's an emergency sidewalk that leaves the building, which is required obviously by ADA and fire requirements. So, that then required us to have the two feet proposal for the landscaping, instead of the five, in that area, but I do want to, want to note that we are not requesting any landscaping variances. So, we are required, we are providing the required amount of landscaping material, it's just another area so we can accommodate that two, that three-foot emergency sidewalk. Moving on to our required non-self-inflicted hardship, which as you know is required for variance, what you'll see in this slide is, in the area designated in red, that's the city's parking lot for the beach, and you all are familiar with. As far as I can tell, back in the late 1970s, the city acquired those lots, and I'm being told they were single-family lots, and the city acquired them, and I believe they acquired the last lots in 1978 or around that time to then move forward with the parking lot. The Radisson family moved in around 1980, and that parking lot was not developed yet. So, I'm assuming sometime after that, after the city fully acquired it, the city then moved forward with providing and developing that, that city parking lot. What's extremely unique about that is, as part of the development of the parking lot, they graded that area and raised the parking lot area anywhere from two to four feet or more above the grade of the homes, and you'll see future, why that becomes important to our non-self-inflicted hardship. This is a picture, if you are looking in the city parking lot, looking west towards the, the subject property for the development. And what I want you to take, pay particular attention of is, see the arrow showing the roof of the subject property? Now, that's just standing in the city's lot, looking down, and you see about 75 to 80 percent of the home is, is not visible, based on the existing grading of the city's parking lot above and beyond our parcels as you, as you head west. This is an additional picture, so you can see, like I said, at least two to four feet and above, and where those trees are is the top of the hill, and then you go down towards, down the slope, and then head west into our property. So, this is just another picture to show you the difference in the grading between the city's lot and, and my client's property. So, essentially, we're now in a hole with respect to the grade of our adjacent property. And this is a picture, now, in, in full disclosure, I took this picture, and I'm vertically challenged, so I was standing down at the bottom, I was standing at the bottom of the hill looking up. So, it actually turned out to be a great picture, if somebody was taller, it probably wouldn't have been as, as telling in the picture, but I think it does give you a very good indication of the difference in the elevation between our parcel, which is, which is, would be to my back, and then I'm looking east in that picture, taking the picture. This is just another picture frame of reference, as you can see. There's no camera tricks here, those are normal-sized dumpsters, and as you can see, majority of the home is, is gone because of the difference in the grading between, between the two lots. So, now I want to show you exactly how being in that hole kind of affects the setbacks and what the requirements are versus what we're proposing. This is the house that's to the north, which I said, the pink house, and the existing setback is approximately three feet. So, if you see the, the edge of the home and that chain-link fence, the chain-link fence is the property line, and so that's about three feet between the chain-link fence and the existing home. Our proposal is the 10 feet 6 inches, so that's where that arrow is in that red line on the house. So, you can see, our proposed building is further away from the existing property line than the existing condition today. So, even with the variance, we are making this condition better than what it is today. This is the home to the south, very similar scenario, so the existing setback between the PVC white fence and the edge of the home is approximately seven feet. You can see, if you were to build a new single-family home today, it would be required to be a 10 feet, a required 10-foot setback. That is the arrow to the right. So, that's where a new home today would be, and then the arrow to the left, which is 13 feet 7 eighths inches away, is where our proposed building is. So, so not only are we proposing a building that's further away than the current condition, but it also would be further away than a new single-family home that met the code today. And so, I just wanted to show you once again, we are making this a much better condition than it already exists today. This is an aerial that kind of shows the layout and the property, I think it does a good job kind of showing you the existing condition and the proposed condition. The border in the pink is the, the lot, the boundaries of the property with the two lots combined. Then the red border is our proposed building, and then you'll see the yellow on the top, or which would be the north, and the yellow on the bottom, which would be the south, those are the two existing home setbacks. So, as you can see, our red line where our building is proposed is further setback than both on the, on the north and on the south. That just shows you a good juxtaposition of our proposal versus, versus what is existing today. And we do still meet that intent of the 10 feet on the two sides and the 15 feet in, in the back. It's, it's so, the height is what necessitates this variance, and as you see, because you're in the hole, we're required to have the height, or else that bottom floor would be looking into either a hill, the dumpsters, and the other facilities over there. So, the height does get us over that, and, and that non-self-inflicted hardship that's created by the adjacent parcel. This is to show you what the size of a building would be if they met all the setbacks as proposed by code. It's, it would have approximately 45 feet, and that's extremely narrow. Our building is 76.5 feet, to give you a frame of reference, and with, that's still exceeding the, the minimum setbacks from the RM 25. Now, I think a question would, may be, well, do you need that height, and is it, and what is the problem? Why can't you just build shorter? And would you not need the variances if you built shorter? Well, the answer to that question is no, and this is an example of that. So, on the left side, you'll see I proposed a two-story home. So, that's just going one story over, over what, what's today, right? And typical story is about 15 feet, right? So, say that's 30 feet in total height for a two-story home. These lots are 50 feet wide, 140 feet deep. So, if you have a 55, a 50-foot wide lot, and you build a two-story home, you're 10 feet over that 20-feet threshold that triggers that extra that 20-feet threshold that triggers that extra setback. So I am required to do an extra five feet on each side of the property. So as you can see there, if you have 50 feet, you have the 10 that's required by code, plus the additional five, that's 15 on the north, 15 on the south, that's 30 feet in setback. 50 minus 30, you're left with 20 feet wide for a house. That's just simply not viable. And that's only a two-story home. So even if you go one story above the single-story, you're in variance territory. And so, on the right side, that just shows you the 30-story height. And I just wanted you to see, I didn't get aggressive with the height. 15 feet per story is a very fair, you know, estimate of what each floor would be. And at two stories, we're still in variance territory. So it's not that we are excessively asking for height. It's that, based on the size of the lot, the fact that we're in the hole, we automatically are in variance territory, based on this non-self-inflicted hardship. And very briefly, for city attorney, I'm just going to go through the requirements of the code and show you how we meet all of them. The first, for the variance specifically. First one is that a special condition and circumstance exists which are peculiar to the land, structure, or buildings involved, and which are not applicable to other land, structures, or buildings in the same zoning district. Obviously, this is an urban infill area. It's blighted, and it's something that needs special attention to make sure that a development that comes through is going to meet the community needs. The property sits below the finished grade of the park, which I've shown you in picture, both in, and in the plans. And you have existing conditions of non-conforming structures. I showed you those two structures as they stand are way closer to setback than what we're even proposing now. So even in our situation, we are providing a much better scenario. And these are narrow lots. Like I said, they're 50 feet by 140 feet each. Even with combining them, we're still in this dilemma. Condition number two, that special conditions or circumstance do not result from the actions of the applicant. I think I've clearly established that it's a non-self-inflicted hardship with the grading issues and the fact that we're in a hole. That took place, the applicant purchased in 1980. That took place afterwards, as part of the construction of the parking lot. And there was nothing that the applicant did that put their property in that hole and that diminished capacity. Condition number three, that granting the variance requested will not confer on the applicant any special privilege that is denied by this code to other lands, buildings, or structures in the same zoning district. We present that no special privileges are conferred. These variances are requested for the reasonable use of the property. And I've showed you that with even a two-story, single-family home. And otherwise, it's unnecessary and presents an undue hardship on the applicant. And remember, I said that this is special, this is not a special privilege on anybody else, because we're the only ones in this condition. With the single-family homes, there's only three lots in this area, particularly east of A1A. So there's no other lots in this area that are in the same condition. So this is not something that others would be denied. This is a specific condition that deals with our parcels. Number four, the literal interpretation of the provisions of this code would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning district under the terms of this code, and would work unnecessarily in undue hardship on the applicant. As I've shown, neither site can be developed reasonably under the current zoning regulations or the existing conditions, and that there are special conditions that are hardships that are not caused by the applicant. Even the proposed one-story structure suffers the dumpster and parking lot views. They're in the hole. And that the proposed two-story structure, narrowly limited to 20 feet, is clearly not something that allows for a viable development on the property. It's not feasible. That the variance granted is the minimum variance that will make possible reasonable use of the land and the building structures. And we do believe that is the case, that the proposed building offers the greater setbacks, even greater setbacks in the existing conditions. That's the minimum to allow for consistency with the intent of the zoning district. Remember, this is a RM25 zoning district with a residential high land use. So this is exactly what this zoning district calls for, a dense, multi-unit residential development. And by the way, as you know, to our south is probably four stories, and across the street, I believe, is five and up. So we would probably be one of the smaller buildings in the area in terms of compatibility and consistency. And so, we do think it is the minimum variance that's necessary to be consistent. And that granting the variance will be in harmony with the general intent and purpose of this code, and that such variance will not be injurious to the area involved or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. Based on the condition, condition of these two lots, and you saw the pictures, I think it's clear that this development will be a much-needed boost to that area, and it will be a plus and not a minus, and it will not injure adjacent properties. Also, as I believe you've heard and you've seen letters, I've received several phone calls, there's substantial support for this project through several adjacent property owners. I want to take this opportunity to publicly thank several folks that I've spoken to and heard from. We've gotten a lot of support from Save Our Beach group, and I believe some of their members are here today, and they can probably express their support as well. We've received support from the condo to the south, which is Lakota, and several of their residents have expressed their support. I want to thank the Radisson family. They are going to remain owners of that home to the north. So of course, they are directly affected by this development, and they've expressed their support. And obviously, they wouldn't be staying there if they thought this was an issue. And then, lastly, but there are several others, but in essence of time, there was one more. The Deerfield Beach Island Community Association, believe, presented an email to the commission that said, "These two houses have been an eyesore for our community and are in deplorable condition. The new project will be good for the island community, its residents, and the city. The new building will be consistent with the neighborhood and something that the residents will be proud of. Please approve this project and make Deerfield Beach an even better place to live." Once again, that was from the Deerfield Beach Island Community Association president, and that's just in part. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I really appreciate the opportunity to present to you this evening. And I would, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, like to reserve a few moments to address any comments or questions that are raised. Thank you.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Anyone from the commission care to comment before we open it up to the public?
I think Duane did a great job. I'm more sold on the project than I was a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else? Not anyone would like to open it up to the public for public comment?
Betwille, 2646 Emmer Way Circle. I do have to clarify that the, I'm president of the original Save Our Beach co-president group, and I have to clarify the fact that we, as a group, are not supporting this. And many of our group members individually are in support of it, including me. I think it's a wonderful idea, and I think we should definitely go ahead with it. It'll improve the area immensely. And I do believe that the hardships that were shown by the attorney are actually, are quite valid. But please understand, we are not supporting this as a group. I should have made that plain. I thought I made it plain to the applicants. But as individuals, and some of us are members of the OSOB who are supporting it, and some of us are not, but just want to clarify that. Thanks.
Thank you. Name an address for the record, please.
Katie Freitag, 418 Southeast 2nd Street. I said two quick points that I wanted to bring up. One is, I know that they have support garnered from the south side, from the north side, obviously, the family that owns the property. What about the people directly to the east, whose ocean views are all going to be blocked by this four-story, five-story building? And my second point to bring up is, if the properties were in such deplorable condition, owned by the same people that are here asking for a variance now, I think there's a problem there. If they didn't take care of the property before, what's to say they're going to take care of the property now? Or did they purposefully run it like that and make it deplorable, so it would look better to the city?
Thank you. Just for clarification, the neighbors to the east is the city parking lot?
No, I'm sorry, to the west.
To the west.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, to the west, how can it?
Name an address, please.
Pam Melatello, 884 Southeast 19th Avenue. And I wanted to clarify on the Save Our Beach, we're not supporting it or saying we don't want it. We're neutral. Our group has not taken a position on this. But several members of the group are in favor of it. So OSOB did not take a position. So I don't, even though she said, "We don't support," we didn't take a position. So don't take it that we're in favor or not as an organization. We did not take a position. And I think it's a wonderful complex, and the presentation tonight, to me, if I were sitting up there, I'd be able to justify the variances. Thanks.
March Hilton, 1101 Southeast 5th Court. And although I'm a member of the original Save Our Beach, like she said, it's not the group, it's us as individuals and as a resident, I totally agree and support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to speak?
James McGary, 1442 Southeast 6th Street. I have submitted some photographs that, with the assistance of your staff, I'd like to draw to your attention. There apparently is two aspects to this proposal, one of which is on financial hardship, no, excuse me, on hardship, and the other is on the attractiveness or lack of attractiveness of the area. The incidence of hardship, he's referring to this hole. Well, for those of you who have been there, if that parking lot had been at a lower level, all that traffic going in and out of that parking lot would have been such a hindrance to those homeowners with lights and what have you. So the fact that it's elevated is a benefit to those homeowners. Just imagine, if that was at ground level, all the traffic going into that parking lot would have been, you would look out your back windows, and you'd be looking at that parking lot. So that's not necessarily a negative that the parking lot is elevated. There was reference to, well, if this were a single home, that the setbacks, their setbacks would be better. Well, we're not comparing apples with oranges. You're talking two separate entities altogether. So why they're mixing in, well, if you did it this way, this would happen. Well, the reality is, if they had a lower elevation, it would be better yet. I'm having trouble with some numbers here. This is a four-story building. He's using 15, five stories. He's using 15 feet per. 15 times 5 is what, 75 feet?
65.
5 times 15. So if he's using 15 as a barometer, he's exceeding code. If he's using 15 feet for four.
Let's not have anyone from the public.
The point is, he's using that. He says 15 feet per story. Okay, you've got two stories, 30 feet. You've got five stories, you've got 75 feet. My math may be off, but, so he's mixing numbers here, okay? Now, as far as hardship, the only hardship I can see on behalf of the contractor is less profit. If they downscale it, they're not making as much. Now, I'd like to address now the aesthetics. It was very interesting, some of the pictures he's taken. Do I need to? Okay. I'd like to take you, this is the north side on the side street. This is owned by someone else. This is not part of it. I'm going to take you from the north side. I'm going to swing you around now on A1A.
Mr. McGary, since you're getting to a point, I'll give you another additional minute, if that's all right.
Oh, oh, okay. Let me go through this quickly. So now, I'm taking down A1A. His pictures were taken inside the premises. So if you can continue down, we're going south now. This is what you see from the street. I don't see any blight. I don't see, now, that last building, that is the building just south of this property. That is a condo. That, or not a condo, what else, a four-story, whatever, that is going to replace, could you bring it back the other way? All this vegetation, come on up. Now, I don't see any blight there at all. I spoke with Mr. Miller last week, or last meeting, and I said, "Mr. Miller, you painted this terrible picture." And I said to him, "Why didn't you call code enforcement?" His comment was, "I guess maybe I should have called code enforcement to enforce the code." He said he would do it the next day. I'm not quite sure he did. My problem with this is, there's no hardship that I can see. That's me, of course. And as far as having an attractive area, this is what your trade-off is.
Mr. McGary, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public care to comment?
Dan Hirsch, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. I own another property about seven blocks right on A1A from the subject property. And I can't think of a better example of this property as to see, what is the vision for the city of Deerfield Beach? You just had a workshop on that yesterday. Here you have two rundown eyesore properties, almost as bad as the property at 10 Northeast 20th Avenue. And you have the opportunity to create something that is very nice, that is compatible with the area, and has a few minor variance requirements. So what do you do? Do you grant the minor variance requirements? Or do you allow this eyesore to continue? And maybe even worse, one day, the people find out that the only people they can sell to is maybe another drug rehab facility? Now, I'm exaggerating, but it's to make a point. This is a perfect example of the future and vision of Deerfield Beach. Please don't deny these people the right to build a beautiful building that will complement the city, not deter from it whatsoever.
Anyone else from the public? Like close the public portion to be heard? I'm sorry?
Yeah, just for the record.
Sure, please, go ahead.
And just for the record, with regard to your consideration, what other type of facility could be built in the future, especially dealing with drug facilities and things of that sort, should not? And I know you would not come into your consideration on this application, so I just want to, I'm setting the record on that, and I'm seeing each one of you nod that that would not be a consideration for you, and it's not something you would be thinking about. Thank you.
Your point is, the city would not discriminate.
Thank you, Mayor. Just very briefly, a few points. I just want to make it clear that the last lot was purchased maybe just a few months ago. So this property owner has not owned these lots for years and years and years, and it got into this condition based on their ownership. They purchased the last lot a few months ago. And I assure you, if we are fortunate enough to have this approval this evening, you will see demolition activities very soon with those two homes moving forward with this development. And lastly, to the Save Our Beach group, they were crystal clear that they individually, so maybe I didn't represent it properly, and I apologize if I did misrepresent, they were crystal clear that this was not a group decision, but that several of the members did express their individual support. So I did want to put that for the record. And thank you so much for being here tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm sure all of us sitting up here can relate to having our words twisted, misrepresented.
Yes, sir.
With, is anyone from the commission care to comment? I have a couple of comments on it before anyone else does. I don't see the lights lighting up on this. One of the things that was proven, and I look at that, a point was made is, well, the elevation of the parking lot could be looked at as a positive for this. I don't think anyone looking out their door, their window, is really thrilled about looking at a mound and what could, they could possibly be looking when there's no one in the parking lot, which is the ocean. If we were to grant this, even just to go to a two-story home, and while the math was accurate, I think the application of that was a little skewed in the fact that they were referencing single-family homes, single-story, which is where the 15 feet would come into place. This obviously would be very different. I believe that, I'm seeing nods of affirmation on that, but I believe that's where that comes in. So this would still fall amongst the height registry limitations for code. Is that correct? One of the variances we're not granting is for height. Correct? Okay. So looking at this, I believe that, sorry, Duane, I'm going to keep you busy here tonight. One of the things, looking at this, is that there is a hardship on this. The reason you can't grant a variance just because of blight is because that means anybody who wanted a variance can simply wanted a variance can simply let their properties go to pot, and then we, in a way, kind of try to force us to make a decision on things. It happens all the time. That doesn't apply. That's not the way the law is applied. You have to apply the law when you look at these things. But with that said, there also is, that, those homes, the home, the way it exists now, the setback that we're going to get from them is better than the existing setback now. Am I inaccurate in that, Mr. Dickerson?
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I believe that this is an undue hardship. One thing that hasn't been discussed, which I'm surprised with, based on the elevation, is drainage. I can't imagine going over to that property here tonight, considering all the rain we've got in the last couple of days. When you're on a slope coming off that type of elevation, I would imagine surf's up in that household. So that would be something I'd look as a hardship.
Mayor, I want it to remain positive, but I'm sure our architect would be swimming pretty soon.
That's, that's what I thought. So that's my opinion on it. I supported it previously, and I support it even more now. So, thank you. I'll go with, I'm not sure who was first, but I'll go with Commissioner Parnas and then Commissioner Drosky.
Well, we had a wonderful, wonderful meeting yesterday about progress and where we're going as a city. We can't live in the past. We have to grow as a city. It's a beautiful building, and we're not talking about a cheap rent. They're going to go for, what, $800,000 an apartment, $300,000 an apartment, whatever it is. We're not talking about a pill mill here, or a commercial property. We're talking about where people are going to live, be part of our community. I was for the project before. I'm even more for it now, because I think it's good for the city. It's good for the beach. It's good for the whole atmosphere that we're trying to create. It's new, it's modern, it's clean, and I can only see it improving the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everyone may recall, I was one of the no votes the first time this project came up. And I first want to disclose that I have met with Mr. Dickerson and the applicant regarding this project, both together and separately, before tonight's vote. And I was one of the no votes before, and the reason I was a no vote is because, in my opinion, at the last presentation, there was no evidence presented to us of a hardship. There was, in my opinion, there was nothing that was presented to us in respect to a hardship. And that's why I voted in favor of the rehearing, because there was some evidence that was out there that a hardship existed, it just wasn't presented to us that particular night. So I had the opportunity to meet with the applicant and to review all the materials and the backup. And actually, when I met with the applicant without Mr. Dickerson, it was by total coincidence, it was at the Ocean Blues and, Ocean Blues and Brews Festival, say that three times fast, when I ran into them coincidentally in the main beach parking lot, and we were by this particular property. And in all honesty, Mr. Dickerson's photographs do not do justice to the condition that's there. He says two to four feet in his photographs, but two, I don't buy two feet at all. It's probably more four to five feet. When you're standing there at the edge of the main beach parking lot, looking at this property, it is a steep slope down, even steeper than in his one photograph there. So if you're in this particular property now, and you open up the slider, and you're looking out towards the ocean, you're looking at a hill, a mound of dirt out your back door. That's where the hardship, in my opinion, comes into this particular property. You can't open a door and be looking into a mound of hill that's created by the city's parking lot. So the only read, the only way to get over the, looking into the mound of hill is you have to build up. Well, when you build up, our code requires you to build out for the setbacks. And you just don't have that on this particular property. So I am a, I am and will continue to be a stickler on variances, but when an applicant comes before us and puts together a cogent presentation that was done tonight, and explains to us the hardship of the particular prop, that's related to the property, I don't buy the aesthetics argument for voting for this project. I don't buy that the proposed project offers greater setbacks than the existing conditions. I think that's great advocacy by Mr. Dickerson, but I don't buy it as a reason for voting for the project. But what I do buy voting for the project is the hardship that's created by the property itself, and that's this mound at the back of the property that stares basically into the main beach parking lot. And that's where the hardship lies, that forces, basically, forces his client to build up, because they have no option, because who's going to want to buy a unit looking at a mound of dirt?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. Disclosing that I too met with Mr. Dickerson and with the, the Deglers? The Deglers, very nice people. I'm not going to go through all of the reasons why I made my decision one way or the other, only to say that it was a remarkably better presentation here tonight than what we saw before. And I thank Mr. Degler and his wife, as well as Mr. Dickerson, for coming in. And let me also thank our staff, Eric Power, for, you know, really educating me on some things as it relates to this particular project. And based on that, Mr. Mayor, and I'm the one that asked to have it brought back to us, and I thank my colleagues for agreeing to do that, because anything short of what we're going to do here tonight probably would be not really good for that particular community. And based on that, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion. Is this the time? Okay.
We have a, we have a motion right now, but we'll let Vice Mayor Miller speak as well.
I wanted to make the motion.
I'll second it.
I make the motion that we accept this proposal.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Battle's going to rescind her motion. We'll let Vice Mayor Miller make his motion. We have a second. And any other further comment? We'll go ahead and do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes. Thank you.
Been approved.
Yes, go ahead.
Item number six, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, amending section 98-3, definition section 98-41, adding local activity centers to the list of districts creating section 98-66, local activity center, creating 98-67, Pioneer Grove District Local Activity Center, providing for regulations, providing for the Pioneer Grove District Local Activity Center, creating 98-105, outdoor seating. Amending schedule B off to be parking requirements, providing for inclusion in the code, separability, and an effective date.
City Manager, is your lights on? If you'd like to speak?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Miller, members of the City Commission, and audience, good evening. Before we get started with this first reading of the public hearing, I would like to ask the commission, due to Senator Farmer's meeting on June 20th, which is when the next regularly scheduled city commission is, what I'd like to do is ask if you are interested in moving the regular city commission to Monday, June 19th. And if so, then we need to make sure that we move these items to June 19th and not June 20th. I would like to inform not only the city commission, but also the public, that Senator Farmer sits on the pre, on the subcommittee for pre-K through 12 for the state senate. He also sits on the education committee, the banking and insurance committee, as well as a couple of other committees that are of importance to the city and to the strategic plan, and more importantly, I think, just to the city in general with education. So I did not know if you wanted to make that change. This is not an item that we put forward because we just basically found out about it last week. Do we need a motion? Well, first, to see if there's any interest in moving the commission meeting.
I support moving the commission meeting.
I support moving it.
Commissioner Bell?
I'm going to go along with your, and support moving this, but I want the message to be clear to Senator Farmer, as well as to Representative Hawkins-Williams. They know when our scheduled meetings are. And to schedule a meeting one hour before our meeting on the same date was, it's just disrespectful to this mayor and to this city. And I want to go on record as having said that.
Andy, is there, I'm sorry.
That's right. Commissioner Drosky, before we do that?
I concur with Commissioner Battle, but I have no objection to changing the meeting.
Yes, I agree. Andy, do we have to do anything?
I haven't do a motion yet.
Okay, so we're going to look for a motion on that, please.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We need a roll call, please?
Commissioner Battle?
And the motion is to change the date?
Change the date to the 19th, this one time.
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes. Thank you, City Manager. And I agree, Commissioner Battle, I think it's wrong. It's disappointing that they would schedule something like that without consulting our schedule, considering how much of our, our city makes up of their area. Thank you.
City Attorney, we have number six, the first reading?
I think we're open for the public.
Okay. Anyone from the public care to comment on this? Item number six. Not seeing anyone. I'm going to go and enclose the public portion to be heard. Any comments from the commission? Commissioner Drosky?
I had a question, actually, maybe for staff. In our backup materials, it talks about hardscaping, and it defines it as street furniture. I picture a big sofa sitting on the, on the street, but when you turn back into the definitions section, it gives a little bit more insight. When it starts, talks about hardscape variations, it's talking about benches and, is that what we're talking about? Is that what you're considering to be street furniture?
Mr. Mayor, is it all right, a staff response?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Yes, definition of street furniture for our purposes would be benches, chairs, knee walls, tables that wouldn't be related to outdoor seating for restaurants, or anything that would allow a pedestrian who's walking to, say, you know, take a break halfway through their, their journey. So it'd be decorative in nature, it'd be something that would be approved and reviewed through the site plan process and seen by City Commission.
Is it possible to kind of beef up our definition to say that?
Of course. I would say, hardscape does also refer to, like, say, pavers and things of that nature, too. But I know for our purposes, we're referring to the street furniture.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Drosky, then you're looking for clarification, or at least a beefing up of the definition. Is that what you're looking for?
Correct.
Anyone else on the commission care to comment on this? No one? I think it's, one thing that's clear, that needs to be made clear to the public as far as what this is trying to do. Again, we've said this before, and I'll say it again, the city's not coming in to take away property, to buy property and develop this property themselves. This is design standards and creating this district to allow for and hopefully promote redevelopment of this area. And while a statement was made that, while I don't encourage economic incentives for people to come to our city, I think that money's better spent on luring people to the city by improving infrastructure and putting in what I would call high-impact amenities that would attract people to our city. That benefits the citizens immediately, and hopefully will encourage people to come to our city, as opposed to a giveaway to someone who might be wanting to come in, that might just benefit that individual project. I think there's better ways to do it. With that said, I'm always open to other considerations. Do we have a motion at all on this?
I make a motion to approve.
We have one motion to approve. We have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. We have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
The next is item number seven, in ordinance of the City Commission, City of Deerfield Beach, rezoning property described on attached exhibit A from B1 Community District Business, B1A Flex Business District, B2 Highway Business, B3 General Business, CF Community Facility, DBR Dixie Business Residential, RM10 Multifamily, RM15 Multifamily, RM25 Multifamily, and S, Open Space to the Local Activity Center Zoning District. This is the map change for the Pioneer Grove project.
Before we open to the public, one of the things I just want to say, one of the things that we're trying to do is let the commission speak first, because sometimes our comments might spur the public to have a different, either opinion, or have them want to add something that they may already have pre-planned to say. So I think the preference that we all discussed this would be to have the commission speak first, let the public speak, and then the commission can speak again if they so choose. So anyone from the public, or anyone from the commission want to comment on this? I will. I fully support this. So, like to open this up to the public? Anyone from the public care to comment? Oh, psych. Thank you. That was good. That was good. Little play-action fake there. That was nice. That was nice. We're going to close the public hearing, then. Any other Houdini tricks anybody wants to do to trick us up here? No?
You know, I think a lot of work has gone into this. I think even in our meeting yesterday, there was a lot of talk of this Pioneer Grove area. And I think, I appreciate the work the staff has put into it, and I'm fully in support of it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else on the commission? Okay, we're looking for a motion, then?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion, and we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Item eight, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, amending section 98-3 of the Land Development Code, adding amending definitions relating to residential landscaping, section 98-61, Schedule of Dimensional Regulations, 98-45, RS5 Residential Single Family, 98-46, RS7 Single Family Regarding the Height of Temporary Structures, amending 98-1 Lot Regulations, Lighting, amending section 98-3 Minimum Yard Regulations for Accessory Structures, amending 98-74 Swimming Pools and Fence Screen Enclosure, amending 98-75 Residential Walls, Fences, and Hedges, amending 98-80 Landscape Requirements, 98-81 Tree Preservation, 98-88 Off-Street Parking and Loading, 98-91 Miscellaneous Uses, Home Occupations, 98-94 Growth of Plants and Placement of Objects in the Right-of-Way, 98-95 Landscaping and Paving, 66-59 Parking on Residentially Zoned Lots.
Anyone from the commission care to comment? Commissioner Battle?
I just need some clarity from staff. I know I met with Mr. Power and Mr. Hoyt. Incidentally, in this book, we need to spell Mr. Hoyt's name correctly, okay? We misspelled it. And that's, you know, that's one little stick for me. But is this my landscaping ordinance, basically?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that it? That's it? Well, actually, this is much more than just a landscaping ordinance.
Yeah, because there were so many other things in there.
Right. No, there is so much more to this. If it's all right, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but if we could have staff, and I think it's important for the public to understand some of these changes that are being, because this is going to directly impact you, and hopefully, in a positive way. So if you could talk about some of the highlights, including when it comes to the business licenses, when it comes to homes, that type of situation.
Absolutely. Eric Power, Director of Plan Development Services. Also waiting tonight is Mr. Harold Hoyt, spelled correctly. Of course, our landscape architect and the urban forester for the city. So as Commissioner Battle stated, it is a host of things. The commission, last year, gave staff a directive to do a comprehensive code change to the Land Development Code. We felt the best way to do that would be to take items that were similar in nature and set them as sort of chunks of the code and bring that forward. The item that you're seeing before you tonight is essentially anything related to single-family homes. So you're seeing related to setbacks of single-family homes, landscaping gardens of single-family homes, home occupation licenses you're referring to, and things of that nature, parking lots, driveways, and things of that. We have looked at related cities, adjacent cities, cities that are around the country that have similar geographic or population numbers. We've also updated our code to not just meet what Broward County standards are, but also the state of Florida standards. Some of those were out of date. We are recommending a host of proposals to change in regards to setbacks. We've, one of the more, I think, enlightening things that staff recognizes is that our setbacks of single-family homes is actually much more restrictive than our adjacent communities. So you'll see that's reflected in the table, in your, in your package. Another thing we look... Um, another thing we looked at was for home occupation, uh, home occupation requires a business tax license. Uh, the current code is extremely restrictive. It clearly states the, the, the only, the, essentially five businesses that can, uh, receive a, a business tax license for home occupation. Um, staff receives, uh, this request on a, a daily basis, uh, where these, uh, there are occupants who want to, uh, use their, their home to, uh, basically pay their bills or have a physical address, but in no way would you notice that there's a business in the, in the areas. There's no, there's no physical or external, uh, view of the business. So we have written and worded in such a way where, uh, these businesses, these home occupations still have the ability to have a business, but it would not negatively impact the community.
On, on that note, Mr. Powers, one of the issues that we've had in the city of Deerfield Beach is when people want to have an occupational license like that and operate from their homes, um, they're now, they're going to other cities to, to do this, and that's a loss of revenue for the city of Deerfield Beach, because we were too restrictive on that.
Yeah, and, and they, of course, do pay a business tax receipt.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So, so that's an important revenue maker for the city of Deerfield Beach that we're looking to make this change, because that's something that has been restrictive, and we're not talking about opening auto shops in your front yard or anything like that, but it's some, it's a common sense approach that other cities are taking.
Staff currently reviews all business tax receipts for certificate of use. Uh, home occupation is actually exempted from certificate of use process, so we actually give a, sort of a stricter review, because we don't get that additional chance to see it. Um, so staff would still continue to review all home businesses, uh, with the new restrictions that are provided that ensure that there will not be any visible or knowable, uh, process for them to be, you know, that you're actually running a business out of your home. So, and if you have any questions for, for landscaping, Harold here, is here.
All right, perfect.
I just want you, oh, you didn't recognize.
No, I always recognize. Commissioner Battle?
Thank you. I just want you to, to please, um, identify for, for the public some of the types of uses, home-based businesses, because I'm getting a lot of requests now, and, uh, like the mayor said, uh, people are doing, uh, auto repair work, they're, they have, uh, what are those gyms, the, that I never go to?
Crossfit.
Uh, yeah, the bodybuilding gyms or whatever, out of their garages, they're, they're, they're doing hair in their garages. Are those types of things going to be allowed under this in terms of?
No.
And I always thought that these things, where the home business was like, it was a business that was paper-intensive, basically.
Right. Right. Those, those types of uses are currently not allowed, uh, to have a, where a, say, a, a, a client would come to the home, that's currently not allowed, and so the, the new regulations would not permit that either. Um, but we are, where, I'll, I'll give you an example from what the code says, and it's on page twenty-seven of, of, uh, what you received in Section 9891 for miscellaneous uses, where under E, which is the struck-through portion, where it says professional office, excluding medical or dental, and other business offices excluding any general business which normally utilizes vehicular equipment in the normal use course of operation law, and a pool maintenance, towing service, carpet cleaning, building trades, et cetera. I'll, I'll give you a quick example, we had a gentleman who's here recently, uh, he does, uh, pool estimates when, when they're damaged. I mean, he, he drives his own personal vehicle, uh, when a pool has a leak, it's his job to go to that home and determine what the estimate is for insurance purposes, you know, and that is not a pool repairman who has a big, uh, large truck and, you know, chlorine in the back of his truck and things of that nature, he's, you know, by his office, but under these definitions, we, we're not allowed to give him his license for his home occupation. So if you go to the next page, under, on page twenty-seven and page twenty-eight, you see under number two, the list of standards, the applicant, when they submit for their business tax receipt, will need to meet these standards, uh, and it'll be listed on their business tax receipt, um, that, that they have to meet these standards, and if they are not meeting these standards, then it's a code enforcement violation in which we can take the license away. So it gives us even a, a better ability, because now we've told the resident what they can and can't do, and if for some reason they do violate it, you know, code enforcement actually could be taken.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes, you know, I, I forget where it says it, and I, you gave me an example when we talked about it, like an Uber driver.
Mm-hmm, sure.
He used his personal car. But I'm, I'm wondering about vehicles, even if it's a one-man operator, but he's got all kinds of commercial signs on that car or truck.
Right. Currently, our code doesn't regulate what would be on a, a, what we consider to a street vehicle. So, you know, if you have a real estate agency and you've got a magnet on the side of your car, that's not regulated right now, but say, a automated, like a, a large vehicle, like I'll say, a tow truck, you know, that's a, that's an actual, you know, commercial vehicle, that is regulated, that is not permitted currently in the code.
Okay, so we can still have a pickup truck with a lot of signs on it in, uh, if you're not a HOA kind of association?
Well, that, that's a different situation, HOAs are allowed to be more restrictive, apartment complexes, things of that nature are allowed to be more restrictive.
So it has nothing to do with signage, but you, I think you did clarify to me that obvious commercial vehicles are not allowed?
Yes, and there's definitions for that in the code already, that are not part of this.
Based on tonnage, isn't that correct, usually?
Yeah, it's size, the height, uh, there's actual, we actually did, uh, just so you know, one of the sections of our code, we did address this, we raised the height by a foot of what a commercial vehicle is.
So the new vans.
Because the new vans, we did a lot of research on, on, uh, new vans, uh, I mean, if, frankly, staff felt that if, um, uh, Mercedes-Benz makes a commercial vehicle and staff doesn't allow it to be in a parking lot, there's probably something wrong with that, so.
Commissioner Drosky?
Uh, I just want to, first of all, uh, thank Mr. Power and the, his staff for taking the time. This was not, um, just so the public knows, this was not a small effort, this is a thirty-page revision to our ordinances, which must have taken a lot of time and effort, because you had to cross-reference sections, um, and go to various parts of the code. It wasn't like you just went straight down the line and changed things, I know there was a lot of back and forth, so I, I appreciate the effort that, that went into this. And then, I just wanted to point a couple of things out with this particular ordinance is, one, uh, in, in particular to District Four, that will be of interest, is that hedges for, um, side and rear yards are going up from six feet to eight feet. I know that was a big issue in years past, that code enforcement or code compliance was getting involved, so I think there'd be some relief to the associations and neighborhoods out west in particular to know that that requirement is going from six to, to eight feet. And taking a play out of Commissioner Battle's book with respect to kind of grammar and formatting in this ordinance, on, on page twenty-three, um, there's a section called license application, and before that, it looks like Pac-Man's trying to eat that section, it's a, a symbol I don't quite recognize, so you may want to change, you may want to change that.
Sure.
Um, and likewise, on page twenty-four, uh, your subsections seven and eight run, run together in one sentence, so you might want to break, break that up. I know it's formatting issues, but Commissioner Battle is correct that these do get, get published, and Deerfield wants to put its best foot forward.
Absolutely.
And I also want to point out to my fellow commissioners, one of the sections that we haven't talked about yet that's in here is garage sales. Uh, I have heard comments from my constituents, and there were speakers at previous, uh, meetings before us, and I have put together, uh, with the city attorney's office, a proposed revision to the garage sale ordinance. In fact, we finalized that today, uh, to be put on our next agenda for June, well, it's now June nineteen. I don't want you guys to freak out, it's nothing that's ominous or overburdensome, I think actually, um, I, it, it could have been a lot worse than, than what it is. I, I watered it down, I, I, I bet against myself on this and, and watered it down, but we are one of the few cities in the entire state that has an extremely poor garage sale ordinance, in fact, ours is almost nonexistent, and to read what other cities across this state has compared to ours, it's actually mind-boggling. So what you'll see that I'm bringing before you in, in two weeks is a much watered, watch, much watered-down version from what's out there, uh, but a big improvement from what we basically don't have right now, so that's coming before us in two weeks. And those were my, those were my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Drosky, you'd like to open this up to the public, then?
Wendell and Clark Reed, fourteen-thirty Southwest Sixth Way, Deerfield Beach. Uh, on the fence issue, because there are a lot of us, uh, looking at wanting to, you know, put some kind of fencing around our properties, because we have people who do not curb their dogs. They are walking their dogs all up in your property and everybody else's. Now, I would like to know, uh, you know, to have some peace of mind that I can put a fence up in some manner around my property. So is that an issue that's been really looked at in this? Uh, because when I spoke to someone about it previously, it had to do with, uh, the county, were you in the county's air fence, uh, issue, or are you in the city's? So, you know, we live in the city of Deerfield Beach, and a fence ordinance, I, in my opinion, is something that the city regulates, not the county, because it's the city and where I'm having the, having the problem. So, uh, I'd like to know from Mr. Powers, I think we spoke about this previously, um, just have we, are we, whose ordinance are we looking at for fences?
We'll have Mr. Powers comment in that one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Katie Frightog, four-eighteen Southeast Second Street, um, and I believe, Mayor Gantz, you commented on this once before, and I just want to make sure that it is in code enforcement, that any new buildings, any new commercial buildings, any new homes are mandatory to have sidewalks on them, mandatory to have sidewalks in front of them. You can't keep walking your children in the street. Um, the second thing is, I just, and this is, again, I have not read the whole thirty pages of it, but I also wanted to find out trucks with signs, you know, tow trucks, as long as it's not the resident, that it's parked in a residence, that's not a business, that's still okay, I just want to make sure that that is still the case, that it's parked at a residence, it's not the business, it's not a business in that residence, it's just parked at that residence. I want to make sure that that's still okay. Thank you.
We'll give you clarification.
Joe Heinz, five-fifty-nine Northwest Forty-seventh Terrace. Um, a little over four years ago, I tried to pull a, get an occupational license for my business out of my house, like, it wouldn't let me do it, so I had to go to Pompano, and I've been paying Pompano hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars for, for over four years now. Um, the mayor picked up on that, went and talked about people running to other cities to get occupational licenses. Um, this is, this is, uh, I hope you guys approve this, because this part of the home occupancy is the most important thing going here, which would allow, uh, you know, Commissioner Drosky to do his law business out of his house, and me to do my electrical business out of my house. And it's just computer work and phone work, paperwork's all it is, and I urge you folks to, to do this, and the city could, I'm certainly could use the revenue, and I believe there's probably a lot of it. Thank you.
You've got your exercise going back and forth.
Yeah, no kidding, that's the penalty for sitting in the back row. Uh, Tom Schussler, I live at fifty-nine Little Harbor Way in Deerfield Beach. Uh, just wanted to let you know that, uh, my wife and I oppose changing the lot coverage maximum to anything greater than the current thirty-five percent. Um, the proposed R-five ordinance would increase the lot coverage percentage to forty. Um, the height maximum stays the same at thirty-five, but there's no limits on the number of floors to stay within that thirty-five. So if you do the math, you could end up with a ten-thousand-square-foot house on an R-five lot, which is pretty crazy, you know, next to a fifteen-hundred-square-foot or two-thousand square-foot ranch, right? I think we could all agree on that. As you know, a developer recently tried to build such a house in our neighborhood, Little Harbor, with a, over forty percent, um, coverage based on a variance, and all of us neighbors got together in Little Harbor, and we came and opposed that variance, and, uh, we got it defeated. And so you can tell how the Little Harbor neighborhood feels about having enormous, big square boxes in the neighborhood, so we just don't want those kind of homes or buildings next to our traditional-sized homes. So we would ask that the, uh, lot coverage maximum not be increased to the forty percent. If the city is set on going to the forty percent, we ask that it also adopt at the same time a maximum floor area ratio coverage of eighty percent, so that would limit the size of a home to something that's reasonable on an R-five lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Terry Scott, six-twenty-four Northwest Second Way, Deerfield Beach. Mr. Power, um, my question would be for you, I believe, then?
Uh, Mr. Scott, if you could address the commission, you don't address staff, please.
Okay. Um, Mayor, um, the question is, are we educating our code enforcement board when our ordinance changed like this? Because we have some ordinance that's in place in our, um, our board, our code enforcers, I guess, don't know it or get it. Uh, I, I had to call them out on last week, um, about a fencing problem, uh, that they cited our family for, and when Bernard came out, he really didn't understand, because the fence had been up twenty-some years. And if we are changing, I just want to know, are we educating? I did call Commissioner Battle to find out also, uh, about it, she could not tell me either, she didn't know was we educating our folks on it or not, but my thing is, are we educating, um, our board of, um, our code enforcers to make sure that, uh, this community at large understands and don't feel like that they're just being picked on, uh, because that was my thing with, uh, the family that, uh, that called me, uh, the family member that called me, uh, that are we just being picked on? Uh, the fence has been up for twenty-some years, up under the old code, uh, and we don't understand now why we're getting a violation for it. Uh, the fence is inside the property, uh, the correct way, uh, it is, uh, a place for, uh, the boat or the car now, um, with no problem, but code came out and told me that there is a slight problem. There is a slight problem, uh, because the property had a home on it. Now that home no longer exists, uh, and they asked us to put up a fence twenty years ago, uh, and now it has just became a new problem in the city of Deerfield. So my only concern is that when we're making these new ordinance of code, are we really educating our code enforcement? Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Battle, did you want to comment for the next speaker?
Yes, uh, I, I wanted to comment, and, um, it, uh, for Mr. Scott, uh, yes, we will be educating our code enforcement people, we will also be taking, uh, the show on the road, uh, at our district meetings and everything, so that the citizens can understand the changes that we're making. Staff has always, also been advised that we need to work and the city manager, because there was some lag time, or has been some lag time, with us in the unincorporated area. Those folks down there, because they were in unincorporated area before they were annexed, were allowed to have fencing all the way around their property in the city of Deerfield Beach proper, that was not a thing. But we have been, uh, there is some lag time, because we have not held the county accountable for some things going on in that unincorporated area that was annexed, and so when you speak to a code person right now, they may tell you that we really don't, we can't do anything about that, because it was, the, the code is under Broward County's code, not under the city of Deerfield Beach, but we're working to repair all of those issues. So at some point in time, everything is going to come together, and everybody is going to be on the same page. Now, that does not excuse those people who put up fences without getting the proper, um...
Permit permits.
...permits and everything like that. If that happens and code comes out and they cite you one way or the other, you may be told to take that fencing down, okay? So just rest assured that, yes, we are going to be educating not only code, but the balance of the commission, well, all the commissioners, as well as our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, I'm sorry, thank you.
Yes, uh, Michael Lubin, sixteen Little Harbor Way in Deerfield. Uh, good evening. Uh, just, uh, before I begin, I keep on looking at this pier over at our beautiful beach in Deerfield, and I gotta tell you, my students and I at Deerfield Beach Middle School, every day, we look at the video cam underwater, and it's tremendous when it's working. Sometimes, it's not today, it was black and white, but still, we had a lot of fish underneath the pier, so if you could continue that endeavor, that would be great. Now, getting back to what I was going to talk about is, uh, on the code changes, uh, Deerfield Beach, Deerfield Beach, Little Harbor, uh, Board of Directors met with the association, and, uh, it was pretty well-agreed that we would like to see, uh, not to have a increase in... and it was pretty well agreed that we would like to see not to have a increase in the lot coverage size, especially in Little Harbor. Little Harbor is a unique community. It's quiet, it's quaint. We do have some large homes there, but we surely don't want large box sizes. One of the nice entities about Deerfield Beach is it's not like Boca with the high rises, it's not like Pompano with the high rises, Fort Lauderdale, Miami. It has its own personality, and I hope we keep that. And that doesn't mean not to have development or not to change business requirements working out of homes, but still, it does have a special place that people thrive to and go to and stay in and enjoy the communities. So it's really important that we don't try to set this large box-style home. Sometimes bigger is just not better. And as Tom mentioned to you, you know, if the bottom floor is a little large, the top floor should be a little narrower in size as well. That's all I want to say. But there's also one more thing, if I may. The Public Shopping Center at Hillsborough Federal Highway.
It'd have to be specific to this actual item.
Okay, well, that's fine then. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lubin. Yes, sir, okay. We have someone else coming up as well, but.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Hi, Vicki Carlin, seventeen Little Harbor Way. I wanted to just put my input on the height variance. I looked for a house in Deerfield Beach for two years, and I, specifically in Little Harbor, and one of the things that I wanted Little Harbor for is because it's so quaint, and we have, you know, it's a very family-oriented community, and I feel personally that, you know, just making something huge does not, is not going to make our homes increase. I think it will decrease the appearance of the quaintness of the neighborhood. So I think it's such a special neighborhood because of the homes and the properties that we have around our homes. It's, you know, mostly on oversized lots, and that's what makes that neighborhood so special. You don't find that around in Deerfield much east. You always find very, very close, and we have that. So I'm just hoping that you guys don't increase that height. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sir.
Good evening. My name's George Ruffalo. I live at 2557 Southwest Fourteenth Court, Deerfield. Just want to say that I disagree with the opposition on the lot coverage. It's very simple math. The average lot is between seven thousand and seventy-five hundred square feet of lot area. A five percent increase would only allow a three hundred and fifty square foot addition, whether it be accessory or in addition to the structure. So that's like a garden house or another room, and I think they're over-exaggerating the scale of the increase. If you do the math, five percent of seven thousand is three hundred and fifty square feet.
I'm not disputing you.
So I think it's over-exaggerated. They're talking about enormous buildings on a forty percent lot coverage. It's not true.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to speak? I'm going to close the public hearing now. City staff, did you want to comment?
Yes. Eric, thank you.
Start remembering to lower this when I leave. Feel bad for everybody. Just want to thank everyone for their comments. I mean, I really appreciate the input to how it personally affects them. You know, staff recognizes this code change affects the people who live in the city for the positive or the negative. So, you know, a lot of these things came into mind while we discussed this, including multiple members of our staff who actually live in Deerfield Beach and how it actually affects them. Just to address a couple specific questions that came through, you know, one of the bigger challenges that my staff currently has is the unincorporated land that has now Deerfield Beach. When the land did come into corporation, we did not make the necessary changes to the Land Development Code and the zoning regulations, and therefore, anyone who was in unincorporated Broward County at the time still must follow the Broward County zoning code. So we actually looked through two different books, and there are actually multiple places in the city where one person from one side of the street and one person from the other side of the street has different code regulations. And they'll say, why is it that I have to do this versus that? And the reality is, you have to be regulated through the Broward County Code, you have to regulate through the Deerfield Beach Code. Broward County is not in the business of incorporating of, you know, land. They, they're not going to change their code anytime soon. So it's very important that this happened where the city brings them back into the fold the way they should have been. But unfortunately, that is a tremendous process. It is, I started working here in August of last year, and I mean, it was one of the first things I started doing, and I can tell you, I'm probably only about twenty-five percent through the process that we need to get through. It's going to take us a couple years just to get through it. I'm working with, Andy's not here to nod, but I'm working with Andy, you know, to, because it's not just residential, it's commercial, it's industrial. There are going to be people on the commercial industrial side who want to keep their county rights. So it's a much, much larger issue, and I guarantee you, this is one of the things we'll be talking about when I say we're doing a comprehensive code change. This is absolutely one of the things we're referring to. But it is the case with, unfortunately, with Ms. Clark Reed, you know, that that is the situation that occurred, and, you know, when we spent time with her when she was in our office and going through this issue, and we spent a time with a lot of our residents going through this issue and explaining to them that particular issue. Going on a little further, some of the questions I saw, vehicles, as far as vehicles are concerned, it doesn't actually matter to the code whether or not that vehicle is tied to a business tax license within the property. There's just the definition for vehicles, whether they meet it or don't meet it, so that's just, you know, the violation. Code enforcement, code enforcement played a part of this particular ordinance. They were a part of reviewing this. The planning staff meets with code on a monthly basis, we call it Code 101, where we all get together and review code changes. Anytime we do a code ordinance, we all get together and talk about it again. The next chunk of code that you're going to see is all about processes, and code enforcement is one of those processes. So you'll be seeing some changes to how code enforcement goes about their business, including, say, the building department, our public boards, the DRC process, things like that nature. So you'll be seeing some of those changes coming. And I just also wanted to state that while we've had a conversation here today that is probably directly related to Little Harbor, another element that staff looked at when we tried to make these code changes were, what are the common variances that we receive? You know, we have a zoning magistrate, he meets once a month to handle variances on a residential nature, and one of the ones that we see very often is relating to setbacks and lot coverage. We realize that we could not increase the sep, I'm sorry, decrease the setbacks of single-family homes without increasing the lot coverage. That would be, you know, you wouldn't be able to, so if we increase the setback and you get, you know, additional ten feet, but your lot coverage remains the same, you actually would probably not be able to do it. So that is the purpose for it. We did do research with adjacent properties, adjacent cities, municipalities, things of that nature. We saw that there were a majority of people who had the same setbacks and forty percent. I'll just say, it's poor timing right now between the issue with Little Harbor and this particular code change. But this particular code change came and was thought through and came forward, actually before that particular variance. We've actually received three variances in the last six months related to a lot coverage at or above forty percent, and all three of them have been denied. So above forty percent has, has pretty much been denied by the zoning magistrate since it's been brought, if it's been brought forward.
So just for clarification then, so the issues and concerns that residents of Little Harbor have, you don't feel that that would be applicable in what they're saying based on what this is?
Well, what I would say is that if, currently, the floor area ratio is not a consideration for residential homes, for single-family homes. If that was something that is, as the gentleman suggested, that the commission would look at, I would ask that staff have a chance to review that first, to run the numbers and see if that was something that even be applicable. I have a feeling that adding a floor area ratio to a single-family home would probably make it difficult for us to meet our, the overall setbacks for a building. Because most, most homes are one-story. You know, the average home is one-story. Of course, some homes are two stories. Thirty-five feet is the maximum for a single-family home. That typically has to do with, you know, roof eaves and things of that nature.
Again, simplification. Does this change put into effect the concerns that they have?
I'm.
You've heard the arguments.
There's both, well, I guess I, unfortunately, there are people in Little Harbor who feel both ways. I think actually even today, we received two letters that we were, we were asked to bring forward to commission, one for and one against.
Yeah, I don't mean to interrupt you, but the direct answer is, yes, it would have an impact on what they were bringing, or what some of the speakers did talk about.
All right. To the last speaker's comment, as far as the actual, you know, what potential it could actually add, is that accurate? Is that?
I would have to do the math, and it's just, there's multiple examples. The lot coverage in Little Harbor is actually much larger than the average in RS5 zoning district is a single-family home, whether you're on the beach or you're, you know, next to the turnpike. So lot coverage is vastly changed throughout the city. As this gentleman said, seven thousand square feet, seventy-five hundred square feet. I mean, Little Harbor has sometimes where there's maybe even eight or nine thousand square feet as opposed to, say, some properties that have five thousand square feet. So it's difficult to just umbrella something like that.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to go with Commissioner Battle and Vice Mayor Miller.
And Eric, you still didn't, you still didn't clear that up enough for me, because I can tell you, right down on 12th, right, I look at it every day, and when I looked at the plans and what the neighbors were complaining about is that on that particular lot, and if they've started to do whatever they need to do, and by the time they get through putting in the covered patio and the four bedrooms and the two office spaces or whatever, I mean, that's going to be a huge house in that neighborhood. It's going to cover more of the lot than any other house on that street. And so as I listen to what the people from Little Harbor say, are we doing enough to address those type of issues?
Well, I would say, in that particular regard, the request that was made in that particular issue was for forty-two point nine percent lot coverage. I believe it's forty-two point nine percent lot coverage. We're actually referring to a maximum of forty. So we would still be below what even what they requested. So, and yes, in that, yes, in that regard, you know, the city is looking at maximum lot coverage, and we would still not go above a number that would be forty. That's the zoning magistrate's responsibility to determine whether or not there is a reasonable, you know, hardship to do so. Staff acts really as a mediator, not as a mediator, as just a processor for zoning magistrate. We do not offer an opinion to the magistrate, we just, we just process the application. So we don't, we try not to show or provide any bias to the zoning magistrate when it comes to his rulings. So if an item, they could ask for sixty percent, it's still going to go to the magistrate.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes, there's a question, I think I should know the answer to, but I failed to ask it. As we make these new ordinances, this comprehensive work that you've done, does that mean everybody that currently exists within the current ordinances are grandfathered in, and it's just for future? Is that what it means? Or are we going to change things and now everybody gets code?
Well, everyone is affected, but.
Yeah, but it's passed?
Yeah, but at this moment in time, I don't believe any of our ordinance has been written that would negatively affect any existing uses.
Okay, and then, I think I misheard you a minute ago.
Okay.
Because I, many residents here are from single-family home community, but I thought you said this is primarily affecting commercial, not residential.
No, I apologize.
Yeah.
When I was referring to the county ordinance, the county regulation, so the county, when the city took the county land, we incorporated the county land, it wasn't just residential we incorporated, it was also commercial, industrial, and things of that nature. So while I would, I would say that I think, I believe, a vast majority of our residents who are in the county regulation would like to be in the city regulation, I don't know if I can say the same for those who own property in a commercial industrial. So that is probably where part of, the largest part of this hurdle will come.
And then, in particular, I would agree with the residents of Little Harbor, it is kind of a unique area, and it does have larger lots and probably the main size lot in the community, in the whole city. Could there be anything? I know it's not a HOA, and it's not a country club, but I mean, can there be anything that they could do to enforce, could they incorporate, make themselves an HOA where they have their own rules, or is it too late for something like that?
They have a non-binding HOA. I mean, that's up to them if they wanted to incorporate.
I mean, do you, could there be some kind of hybrid where, in a case, that's an example, where, don't you, if someone wants to build, don't they put a notice out to all the adjacent neighbors?
Right, and that's what we do.
And then, and if we have, the current thing is thirty-five percent, and the new applicant wants forty percent, but the neighborhood response after response, a vast majority said, no, we don't want to change it, would they be denied? And could there be some kind of thing?
You can't delegate.
Can't do that?
Be delegating the governmental authority to them to just do it by, you know.
Okay. I was trying to think of some compromise to a unique community.
Well, the concept is, I mean, as we've seen here, that the hardship standard is considerable, and it's going to be difficult for someone, it's really difficult to show hardship in a residential area, why you need to go above forty percent. I mean.
It's, the onus is on the applicant.
And it's a heavy-duty standard, in that type of case especially.
Okay, thank you. But I don't know if I'm clear. I know this county and stuff, but is, the new ordinances, I guess you said it's not going to really affect the people that built within the current codes?
Right.
Right? I guess I was asking, would they be grandfathered in? And you're saying, in this case, the one we're discussing, if anything, they were in smaller ratio, so it wouldn't be affected.
They wouldn't necessarily be affected.
But there's a lot of other rules you have changing here. Is anybody going to have a grandfather-in situation?
We spend, we spend a lot of time looking at that. I like to preach what's called the consequences of the consequences to my staff, and if we, you know, you have an issue and you think you've resolved it, what problems have you created by resolving it? So we spend a lot of time having those discussions and conversations. We do not believe at this moment there is anything that would negatively affect someone by this code, by these code changes.
If anything, when you discuss with me, there was more latitude for ground cover and various things like that?
We're actually creating more latitude for many areas.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Don't walk away yet, Eric.
Drive, I can drive.
Ms. Freitag actually had a two-part question there, and I think you missed the first one about sidewalk installation requirements for new homes.
I would actually have to ask Mr. Good. I apologize.
Mr. Good, you can speak from back there if there's a microphone.
Can you repeat the question, please, though? Sorry.
This isn't a city committee hearing here.
Yeah.
Can't plead the fifth.
One of the residents, Ms. Freitag, asked as part of this, would new sidewalk, or would sidewalk installation be required as part of someone building a new home in a neighborhood?
Not necessarily. It depends on what the adjoining homes are like as well. If none of them have sidewalks, you wouldn't want to put a sidewalk at a property just because you were doing an addition or something of that nature. It wouldn't make sense to do it that way.
Depends on the situation. Case by case.
I think the point was, and what you said, just for clarification, so we're not up here talking amongst ourselves, is that you would not require someone to put in a sidewalk if there's not adjoining sidewalks to mix with it.
Correct.
Okay. That answers your question. Okay. Anything else for Mr. Powers, staff? What else? Commission?
Ms. Mayor, if I might, I think you all did a very good job on this. I like the fact that you delineated the different types of ground covers. It really gives people with allergies like myself an out with the grass stuff. And even though I quizzed them about making sure that we had another option for, what was that kind of grass? about making sure that we had another option for, what was that kind of grass? Well, it's still St. Augustine that we're, we're putting in?
Yeah, yes. St. Augustine grass is the required grass for swales, but we're giving, now we're giving options to put in anything that would meet the Zone 10 requirement.
And in addition to that, if, if the public reads this, these new changes, there's no more zero-scaping. There's Florida-friendly landscaping, which we're following to the T. It gives us a great deal of latitude in terms of trying to help conserve water, which the state asks us to do. And I, I'm very pleased with what you came up with in this particular document. And I'll be the first one to ask for you to come to my district meeting, so that you can let the citizens know exactly what the changes are. Thank you.
Just one other note on this. When you talk about the Florida-friendly, that means it's the University of Florida's IFAAS extension, and they've come up with nine principles for that, which is right plant, right place, water efficiency, mulch, recycling, fertilize appropriately, manage yard pests, reduce stormwater runoff, attract wildlife, and protect the waterfront. So this is a more ecological-friendly approach to what they're looking to do. With that said, I do have some concerns about this, because one of the things in talking to people, I think there's a lot of great changes here. And I think education is the key, but not just for code enforcement, because I believe that is what happens. But I think we need to let the residents understand, and the realty, the real estate community as well, understand what some of these changes are. Because it does allow for more flexibility than we've had in the past, which is a good thing. With that, it's also, while that allows more flexibility, that does not mean that we're lowering the standard, the community standards. So we're not putting something in that's gonna, you know, make homes look worse. It's gonna allow for people to use different methods and means in order to keep their home up to a certain community standard. I am concerned about the village feel that being encroached upon with this, the ratio increase. So I'll approve it for the first, this first reading, but by the second reading, I want a little better explanation of it. I wanna see if there's a, a way to compromise on that, because it's one thing, when you go around in this city, especially on the east side of town, talking to people, they love this village feel that we have. And when we start allowing McMansions to tower over other, other homes, or encroach on other homes, that doesn't help the community. So I might be misinterpreting this. So I'm gonna probably need a little better explanation, so we can address some of the concerns that have been raised tonight. Anyone from the Commission? Are we gonna have a motion on this?
Ms. Mayor, I think that's wise to pass it the first time, and then have a couple more weeks to study it, and ask your questions, and maybe come up with a compromise if one's to, if one thinks that's wise. So I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Next, item nine, an ordinance of the City of Deerfield Beach, mending Section 98.3 to include the definition of vacation rental and transient occupants, creating a new Section 98.105, providing for authority finding the facts, vacation rental regulations, certificates of use, and life safety requirements, revocation of certificate of use containing a severability clause, a provision for inclusion in the city code, and providing for an effective date.
Anyone from the Commission? Commissioner Parnas?
Yeah, I feel we really do need to register people who want to rent their property. Broward County considers if you rent for less than six months, you pay hotel tax, because that's what you're operating, at 11%. That's what the hotels pay. So those people who want to just rent, and rent, and rent, A, they lose their homestead, B, they owe 11% tax. They want to operate a business from their home by renting it, they should register. We should know who they are, so that proper taxes can be collected. It's not catch me if you can, because they understand the Broward County fines are rather severe. So I think we do need an ordinance, an ordinance to register those people who wish to rent properties. It's not fair for the rest of us who pay full taxes, or hotels, or businesses that rent and pay the full tax. The private citizens should rent their property and not pay taxes. The rest of us are picking up or paying it for them. So I do think we need this ordinance.
Just for clarification's sake, just so everyone knows, the ordinance does not prohibit vacation rentals, or provide restrictions on length of stay. That's prohibited by state law, so we're not allowed to do that. But what this ordinance does do is require property owners to provide the following information to tenants: clearly provide information to the vacation rental tenant regarding maximum occupancy; clearly provide information to emergency egress; clearly provide information related to parking locations and maximum parking allowed; clearly provide information for garbage pickup days; clearly provide for information to city noise ordinance hours; provide emergency contact information for the property owner; provide the location of the nearest hospital; properties on the barrier island provide the restrictions for lighting during turtle nesting season; they have to, for a certificate of use process, they have to show the evidence that the property meets the minimum life safety standards; show evidence that the property meets the safety standards for pool barriers; show evidence that the property is efficient smoking carbon oxide poisoning, and that all emergency exits are clearly marked. So we are limited in what we can do regarding vacation rentals, but it's, and I appreciate the city attorney's hard work on this, because this is something that we, we should have in place. One of the biggest problems we have is people complain about, obviously, we have things on the books to control the hours, but people always say, well, I didn't know, you know, we weren't allowed to do this, we weren't allowed to do that. This puts rules in place, so that excuse can't be used. And it tightens it up a little bit for when we have people abusing the system, and you have rental properties that are adversely affecting the community. So while we're limited in what we're able to do, this at least puts a little bit of teeth in some, and it's starting in the right direction, so we have a little bit of control over what's happening with vacation rentals. Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes, I just, as you read the provisions of this ordinance, one thing just occurred to me, and I have a real-life This Week illustration, where it says, provide emergency contact information for the property owner. I think I'd like to add, or suggest that we add, and my fellow commission attorney add, owner or agent. For example, my, right next door to me, to the north side of my house, there's a vacation rental house. I got a note from my neighbor that the garbage was put out, and not just in the bins, but in plastic bags, and an animal got into it. Well, I didn't call the doctor in California, I called his manager, and within an hour, they had that garbage cleaned up. In other words, so, you know, a lot of these people have managers or agents locally, and they're the contact person to correct problems like the poor garbage out, or too much parking, or too much noise. And I've called him on other occasions, and he responds very quickly, because they don't want a problem. So it's not changing it. I like the idea. I live next door to one, and across the street from one, and there's two more on my block. So I like the idea of posting notice of the contact person, and the proper garbage days, and stuff like that. So I'm in favor of this with that little modification that I suggested.
See what we can do. Some of them may not have a manager.
But I mean, or, and/or, you know what I mean?
The responsible part, yeah, I got it.
Responsible part.
Commissioner Bell?
Very quickly, I'm looking at the note that we got from our planning, well, Eric, you gave me this, but the Planning and Zoning Board met, and they asked us to, they disapproved what we were doing. And it was based on, from what I can understand, one of the reasons they based it on was that it's going to be more work. And in terms of more work, they felt that it was not going to be completely enforceable, and that the owners of said properties would have to submit to the city for the certificate of use. The additional concerns, like they said in this note, would create added regulation for violation. And if we decide to go with this, like you said in your staff report here, I want the public to understand that this probably, the enforcement of this, is this what I'm reading, the enforcement of this would be given out, or farmed out to a third party in order to do this? I just need you to clarify what we're gonna be voting on here.
Thank you. Well, the memo asked for clarification from, from the board, the commission, as to how you felt it would be best that staff regulate this. One of the options is for a, a third party. That is not the direction that staff is giving you. Staff is just, you know, clarifying what the options are. So, you know, of course, the first option is, we don't do anything, just on the records, right? Second option, of course, is we, we actively regulate and enforce this. It's, we believe there are between 350 and 400 of these particular homes in the city, so it's, it is a lot of work. And the Planning and Zoning Board was fairly acute in recognizing that this is gonna be a near impossible task to catch everyone. I mean, you know, when we were, actually started this, we started this back in January, researching, and there are many more homes in, on the websites in the season than there are right now. We were just looking at it actually just last week, and the numbers have greatly reduced. So it's also a seasonal issue for us to regulate. So, so while we will, we will probably catch the vast majority, and certainly catch the, the poor offenders, the ones who are out there with the trash issue, or, you know, the noise issue, or things like that, because as their code enforcement's responsibilities, I don't know if we could receive 100% coverage. That may be impossible. The third-party applicant, that's something that they guarantee that they can do.
I, can, can I continue?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The problem that I'm having is that, coming from staff, you're recommending one thing, and, and we put these folks on our Planning and Zoning Board to sort of weed out, or tell us what's, you know, advise us one way or the other. And if I'm sitting, sitting behind this, this little mic up here, and, and they're saying that we're not gonna be able to enforce. So in my mind's eye, I am thinking, well, why would I want to put something into place? I know there's a problem, don't, don't get me wrong. I know there is a problem, but why am I going, or why should I vote to put something in place when we all already know that we're not going to be able to enforce it? That's what I...
Well, I believe we'll be able to enforce it, but I don't believe we'll be able to receive 100% enforcement. I don't know if that's ever gonna be possible for any situation, you know, but we will be enforcing it to those that we find.
The City Manager, if you want to comment on that?
Yes, I do, because, just not for Commissioner Battle, but Vice Mayor Miller, and for the education of Commissioners Parnas and Drosky, who are not here. This was something that the city commission, not even the city commission brought this forward. This was brought forward by several residents, most of whom came from, I think, the Cove or the Barrier Island area in the spring, or late winter of 2016. And one of the things that I had asked the city commission to do was to take, that we would revisit this. We were not prepared last year to take on this, this type of task, just because we had some pending issues with Amanda, the former planning director, getting ready to leave, and weren't fully staffed with the Planning and Development Services. Now that we are, and we feel that using a third party will in fact help greatly, because this is our expertise. And even if we did move forward with outsourcing it to whatever vendor may reply, it would still have to come to the city commission for final approval. So, you know, we feel confident in moving forward now with this vacation rental, and we will make it happen if this is a priority or the policy direction by the city commission. And it's clearly an issue. If you recall, several of the complaints were about late nights, you know, late parties, things of that nature, noise, trash, as you said.
Parking.
Parking was another one. And then, of course, our life safety standards that we want to make sure that are in place. The other thing, and they haven't really come forward to any of you, but I, last year, when this was kind of being, when this was being discussed, I was, you know, certainly did get some feedback from hotels, that they feel this is unfair, that they're paying this bed tax, but Airbnbs are getting, are competing against them unfairly. So that's why we felt confident, staff felt confident, and I felt confident to bring this to you now.
Well, just to clear, clear, just, and this is my final question, Ms. Mayor. Did we not have a bill dealing with vacation rentals at the state level this year? And if so, what happened to that? And are we, and I know Broward County did something, but are we in tandem with what has been passed by the state Broward County and now us?
Yeah. At the state level, I believe it died, you know, committee. So that's one of the reasons why we held off on bringing this forward, and we didn't want to wait until the state legislative session was over, because we didn't want to bring this forward, and then say, two months later, we have to repeal it. So, yes.
So what happens if the state comes back next year? But no, we're not going there. Okay, I'm done.
Well, if the state comes back, and we have to...
Something we worry about every year on all our ordinance.
We're always worried about the state coming back. Commissioner Drosky?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I initially started kind of dubious on this subject. Our, our Planning and Zoning Board did vet this very thoroughly, and they came back with some, what I consider to be very valid feedback with this ordinance, that, and Commissioner Battle touched upon it, that, you know, one, the ordinance is too cumbersome in regards to the required documents and inspections that the property owners would need to submit to the city for the certificate of use. Two, it would create added regulation for violations, which are already controlled through the current code enforcement process. And three, that it would come, it's not enforceable, that the city would have a difficult time finding and certifying all short-term rentals. And Mr. Power even indicated that 100% enforcement is not possible, though 100% enforcement on anything is not, is not possible. And I have a map that was provided to me of all of the likely vacation rentals in our city, and the vast majority of them are in Districts 1 and 4, but most particularly District 1. So I'm glad that the city manager was able to comment that these are, I was wondering if it's even a problem in the first place. Are we putting an ordinance on the books, just to put one on the books? But I'm glad that he put some, something into the record, that there, we are having problems with parking, with parties, with parking, you know, in these areas. And then Commissioner Miller, in his comments, supported that as well. So I feel a little better in that regard. But when I was thinking this through, kind of the unintended consequences of this is twofold. One, which the city manager alluded to, is two, there's two things that the city is missing out on. And one is the tourism and the bed tax that the vacation rentals aren't paying, that the area hotels and other properties are paying. So that's lost revenue that we're missing. And the bigger issue, too, is if you're renting out your property, then you are probably not entitled to your homestead exemption. And then how many people are underpaying their property taxes, because they're getting the homestead exemption that they're not entitled to? And if there's that many properties in the city, up to 350 to 400, that's a lot of revenue that the city is missing out on through no fault of our own. So this is a case where the unintended consequences of this ordinance actually are a huge benefit to us. So that, to me, was the deciding factor to support this.
No, we meant to do that. Vice Mayor Miller, and then Commissioner Parnas?
Yeah, I, again, I'm, I have it next door, across the street from me, so I live with this. And I like the idea of having an ordinance, even though you can't regulate everyone or know everyone, I like the idea that an owner that's renting their house on a short-term basis knows of certain rules. It, this seems common sense, not to disrupt the neighborhood. I mean, people live in condos, may very well get, have this kind of problem, too, but in Central Village. But where I live, parties, excess garbage, cars all over the lawn, all kinds of things like this. All of a sudden, you drive by million-dollar houses, and you got houses with cars all over the grass. This is a first step. And to, and for the ones that you don't even know they exist, who needs to regulate them? But the ones that are abusing the situation, that are become party places, this is very important, to say, there's rules in the city, and we're not the only city. Almost every city I can think of, Lauderdale by the Sea, Fort Lauderdale, are having regulations. think of, Lauderdale by the Sea, Fort Lauderdale, are having regulations now, because the state didn't do anything. I mean, personally, my neighbors are making so much money, I'm thinking about turning my house into one of these. But I don't mind the regulations myself. But I think it's a good thing, and it, it helps not disrupt a neighborhood. So, I, I would ask you all to support this bill.
Commissioner?
Yeah.
Commissioner Parnas?
Century Village is not excluded. There are many snowbirds, or people that are now buying apartments and renting them. And if they can't rent them for the year, they'll rent them for a month, or two weeks. All of a sudden, in my own building, there's six teenagers in an apartment for two weeks. So, they need to be regulated. And that person, if they have a homestead exemption, should lose it, because they bought an apartment, they're not living there, and they're constantly renting it. And that puts them in line to not get a homestead exemption. That puts them in line to pay the bed tax. And why should the rest of us lose that tax money for some greedy people? They want to rent, do it legally.
Thank you, Commissioner. Open this up to the public? Name an address for the record, please.
Jerry Lee, forty-three eleven Crystal Lake Drive. Proud to be on the planning and zoning board now. Thank you. I came up with my own independent decision on this. I read this. This says that any individual owner who rents their property more than three times must become conducive to these new rules. Once you do it more than three times, to me, that means you're a business. Now, if you do it less than three times, and you want to just make a couple bucks, you're off the books. It's already written in there. But you're doing it more than three times, now you are a business. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. What else from the public? Want to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to, to approve this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Drofsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gans.
Yes. Thank you for your support on that. I, I don't like, I don't believe in putting in, on the books, unenforceable laws. I don't think this is the case for this one. So, thank you.
The next item is item ten. An ordinance of City Commission amending sections two-one-sixty-seven and two-one-sixty-eight relating to the Deerfield Beach Cultural Committee membership and removal. This is second reading, it is the public hearing. Yes, Mayor?
Any comments from the commission on this? Anyone from the public here to comment on this?
Katie Faritog, four-eighteen Southeast Second Street. Just a small side note, you guys changed your meeting from the twentieth to the nineteenth. That's the same night that Cultural Committee meets. Just want to say, share that.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to close the public portion. Anyone else in the commission care to comment on this? You get a motion, please?
I'll should go approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have roll call, please?
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Drofsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gans.
Yes. We are on to your consent agenda? It's okay.
Consent agenda, any polls?
Any polls on the consent agenda?
Not hearing any. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Before we take a vote on this, anyone from the public care to comment on any of the items on the consent agenda? Item number eleven all the way through twenty-one? No, not seeing anyone from the public. Can we close the public-to-be-heard portion? And any other commission comments? Let's have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Drofsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
The final item is a resolution appointing Jerry Dubois as a regular member to the Community Appearance Board.
Motion approved.
Second.
Needs to be open to the public. Anyone from the public care to comment? Not seeing anyone from the public, can close that. We have a motion and a second. We have roll call, please?
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Drofsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes. Very much. Okay, comments by the city manager and city attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do have a few items to go over this evening. First of all, I believe that a resident spoke earlier about the underwater camera from time to time. That camera does go down due to the conditions. And if the conditions are bad, we do not send a diver down to fix that. So, I think we've been much quicker on repairing that and getting back online. Second thing is, I just want to thank City Commission and staff for the great session yesterday with strategic planning. Thought it's a very important first step forward for this city, and it's certainly going to help me with the upcoming proposed budget, and also help us when we're preparing for zoning and other types of land use applications. So, thank you. There are a couple of items that I want to have staff discuss. And the first one, we'll be dealing with the Fourth of July and some precautions that we will be taking to make sure that is a safe event for all participants. And I'll have Captain Schnackenberg, who is the district commander for our city, come up and speak to that. Yeah.
Is it okay?
I would prefer you to speak up here at the podium. Mr. Good just was lucky.
Why did Tom get to speak out here?
Because he just had to answer yes or no.
Chief, please don't let me have you removed from here.
Good evening. Basically, you know, with everything that's going on in the world today, we feel it's necessary to take some precautions for Fourth of July. So, we're going to be implementing a lot of security measures, and I'm not going to discuss those in public, but you will see a difference. And we're concerned, there is no intelligence or any information from Homeland Security that we are a target, but it's better to be prepared, especially with everything that's going on in the world. So, we will have some extra measures for Fourth of July, and we ask the public to bear with us. It's for their own benefit and their own safety.
Thank you.
And, yeah, thanks. Just with that, our marketing and public affairs department, they will be putting out a lot of information in advance, so visitors will be aware, because we always have long lines going on to the island and coming off. So, this could make it a little bit more timely, or it's going to take a little bit more time for them to go on to and off the island. The second thing is something that Mayor Gans had requested for staff to discuss, and that is with the medians, and what we're currently doing, and what we have planned, not only for this current fiscal year, but, you know, moving ahead into the next fiscal year. So, I'll have Mr. David Miller, who's our new Parks and Recreation Director, address that to the city commission. Thank you.
Good evening, Your Honor, Bobby. Thank you for these few minutes I get this late hour. I appreciate that. You know, going into my seven-and-a-half week here, a lot of things you try to get your arms wrapped around, and I understand the, the median program is something that's very, very important here in Deerfield. So, we're, we're really focused on how we can improve that. And, you know, we do face some challenges. You know, I come to find out that it's been a long lead time with Broward County to be able to get medias installed, to some of our medians. And, you know, without good irrigation, it's hard to maintain medians, keep them looking great. That's been a challenge for us. We've also suffered some vandalism to our irrigation systems, some consistent vandalism, I understand. Those are backflow valves, and some of the controllers have been damaged and been repaired. And we spent quite a bit of money getting those things back up and running it. But downtime occurs when that happens. So, that's also been a challenge. Numerous of the medians that are in public right-of-way are not owned by the, are maintained by the department, maintained by the city. So, that creates some inconsistent look, inconsistent standards of how things are maintained. So, those are some of the challenges that we're trying to address with the median program. But one of the things that we're going to plan on doing this coming year, excuse me, is that we're also going to get some additional medias installed. We're working through the process that right now. Hillsborough Boulevard, Forty-eighth Street is one, as well as Dixie Highway, to facilitate, to being able to upgrade the medians there, to make them look nice, and be able to maintain them once we get them installed, and once they're designed. We're working to have backflows in those controllers installed underground to help eliminate some of the vandalism. And also, where we can't do them underground just yet, we're putting them in protective cages to prevent them from being damaged. We're hoping that's going to be able to reduce the downtime for those problems that are occurring. We're also working to, with the City Landscape Marketing, Mr. Hoyt spelled correctly, to help design, design a landscape plan for the city, to look at how we can better design medians that we have. You know, we, we inherited some medians from the annexation process. And so, we need to try to bring those up to the standards that the rest of the medians have, that we have. But we want to have a new look. We want to have a more robust-looking median program. So, that's what we're going to try to do. But once we do that, we need to develop a plan of how we're going to go about implementing it. So, we want to develop a priority plan for medians and for irrigation replacement, which I think is going to be important. So, along with that, we're budgeting some money for twenty-eighteen to upgrade the medians at Hillsborough, at Forty-eighth Street. That's from Dixie Highway to Military Trail, and at some on US One coming up, and FY eighteen. We're also working to install some additional entryway signs and increase the landscaping. So, when you're coming into the city, you're going to have that really pop look in the air. That's part of our plan as well this year. So, we want to try to focus on that as much as we can, as much as the dollars will allow us to, to do. One of the things we want to think also about is maybe bringing a recommendation to the honorable body to consider, of the city taking over the maintenance of those privately-owned medians that are in the public right-of-way. We think that by doing that, we'll be able to have a more consistent look, have a more, a consistent standard, how things look and how they maintain. We're, we're going to be talking about that, how, what the best way to go about doing that. We understand that that'd be a budget implication, so that may be something we'll look at, passing the cost on to those that own those pieces of property. But we think in the long run, that would definitely help the median program. So, we're going to be focused on that, trying to make it better and better each year, as far as the money will allow. But just wanted to give you a quick update on where we were going, what we're trying and attempting to do to make that program a lot better. And the word I like to use is robust, to make it more lush, to make it pop as where we can. That's our plan.
Thank you. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yes. Thank you for, and it's a big job to take over. I, I wonder if you've looked into, in some medians, we have palm trees and such. I, I don't know if we're maintaining them on our quarterly ba, feeding them quarterly, or some, twice a year or something. But I've seen us lose some very big palm trees.
Yeah.
Coming from Boca right into Deerfield, and I'd rather not see a palm tree than see a dead palm tree. So, please, it's not that hard. Four times a year is, is really good. If we can't afford that, three times is better than two. But a regular maintenance of our palm trees, feeding and such, and some of them may have died from irrigation problems, too. But I just want to, just bring that to your attention, sir.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
City Manager?
Did you have a question for Mr. Miller?
No.
I, I have some more comments regarding that. I believe public humiliation can be an effective tool in getting these people that are, own those right-of-ways, or, and those medians, that are required to maintain them, that aren't maintaining them, by posting a sign saying, "This property maintained by." So, nothing's more embarrassing than, let's say, and I, let's say you're a local hardware store that's required to maintain one of these medians, that for years wasn't doing it. And, and finally forcing them to do that by putting their name on there, I think that would change their mind a little bit, just as a possible solution, that we might make it cheaper for us than us maintaining it, that we put them on the spot. And that might not work, but it's just something to, some food for thought. The other thing, if you look at Coconut Creek and what they've done recently with their new landscaping plans that they have along Hillsborough, going into Lyons, it's very impressive. Not just, and they did this a couple of years back, but if you look, we have what I would say is pressed concrete in areas to make it look like some sort of brick. And it, most of it's chipped, it's stained, it's broken. We need pressure cleaning on our medians in those areas which are concrete. And, and I don't like a plan that has exoras, plumbagos. To me, they, they just don't add to the aesthetics of this city. And I'm a big proponent of making sure that we really improve our curb appeal. I think I made that pretty clear yesterday. You guys got sick of me saying it. But that, that's, to me, very, very important. So, thank you. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gans. Just quickly, we will be going into a little more detail about what we have planned during the budget workshops at the end of June, June twenty-second. I forget, I think you're going the twenty-second for parks. So, we'll talk more about what we have planned to address some of the issues with fertilization, things like that, and irrigation. And then we will be going back out to bid in the fall for the landscape contractor, which expires in early two thousand and eighteen. So, and when we, we're right now preparing the scope of services, and we're spending a lot of time on setting standards and things like that. And we can certainly talk to you individually about what will be contained in there. The last thing, unless there's any more questions about this item?
The only thing I will say regarding the landscaping, we have, the maintenance, I have seen an improvement over what we had from a year ago. So, while I agree with going out to bid on it, there has been an improvement.
Thanks. And, yeah, Mr. Parcell, along with his three supervisors, they've really been a lot tougher, and I certainly appreciate that. The last thing, and thank you. Just to let the city commission know, we will be doing a slight facelift to the city commission chamber during recess in July and August. So, it will look a little different than what you see in here. It'll have a little more, as Mr. Miller said, pop to it, so.
Check, Carter.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor Gans. Thank you.
Okay. Commission comments? Commissioner Miller, or, excuse me, Vice Mayor Miller, start with you?
The only comment I have is, I appreciate you sitting at the middle chair right there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Commissioner Battle?
Yes, sir. Let me first thank my city manager. We had a situation on our beach on Sunday that could well have gotten out of hand. And I'm not going to even go through the particulars, but I do want to thank him and staff for averting a situation that could have gotten quite nasty in this, this city. And follow that by saying that, for the citizens of the city of Deerfield Beach, we are a very diverse community, and we ought to embrace that diversity. And having said that, then, that also applies to the staff that works for this city. We are a very diverse workforce, and we ought to embrace that diversity. And when something goes akilter, or something gets out of hand, like could have gotten out of hand on our beach on Sunday, you know, that, that's not to be tolerated in the city of Deerfield Beach. I love this city. I'm second generation, born and raised here. My mother was born and raised here, and it's come a long way. And I, again, just want to say that to the audience, because I know there are people looking in. We need to embrace our diversity and stop being so divisive, some of us, one way or the other. Having said that, then, I want to thank my governor, which I don't often do. For those of you who don't know, he did approve our four hundred thousand dollars for the African-American cemetery. So, we would expect that within the next year or so, that we will start to redo that cemetery and provide respect to those folks that were interred there, one of having been my great-grandfather. In addition to that, then, again, I want to thank Eric, and where's Mr. Hoyt? He's gone. I, I think we're going to do wonders with this. And I've been waiting a long time. And I know some people have been taking some pot shots at me, because I don't- And I know some people have been taking some pot shots at me because I don't have grass. Now, I have something that I can do with my yard and actually make it conform with the city and also keep my health working very well for me. Finally, Ms. Mayor, I want to thank you since you've been sitting at the helm here. I go home and I breathe. Okay? I haven't been able to do that in the last one or two years, but I thank you for what you have done and what you are continuing to do in terms of having this community just embrace our very diverse, you know, diversity that we have. Again, thank you.
Thank you. City Manager, you want to?
Yeah, Commissioner Battle. I think you forgot about inviting everyone to the Wing Warrior and Music Fest.
I sure did. And pray that there's no rain. I'm going to be there on Saturday between 12:00 and 6:00, and I get a chance to judge the wings. Come out, we, I think last year we gave out some for free to those people that were there. Come out to the Wing Warrior contest on Saturday at Oviedo McKethan Park. If you have not signed up, I don't think it's too late to sign up. If you think that you have the award-winning wings, come out, bring your grill, and let's eat some wings. That'd be on Saturday, Saturday at Oviedo McKethan between hours of 12:00 and 6:00. I see Officer Stallins back there. He's going to be barbecuing some wings for us. Thank you.
I have the gavel, Chief. Commissioner Parnas?
Couple of things. Next week, on the 13th, there's a District Three meeting at the bottom of Eight Northwest Eighteenth Avenue, right at the lake in Crystal Lake. Commissioner La Marca is going to be there, the mayor's going to be there, I'm going to be there. Some of the department heads, I want everybody in Crystal Lake, A, to know they're represented and B, to meet their representatives so we can interact with them. They are an important neighborhood and part of Deerfield Beach, and we want to get to know each other. Second, I've asked the City Attorney to draft an ordinance to protect us should marijuana become legal in this state, to draft an ordinance so that if we can dispense it, it's done safely, correctly, so that we have no even thought of a pill mill operation here in Deerfield. Thirdly, I'm going to vent for a moment. Somebody got up at the last meeting and accused this commission of trying to get rid of a business. We are pro-business, but we got rid of pill mills, and they employed people, they were a business, because the commission found and police found they were detrimental to the life and health of this city. If any business, whether they're making Styrofoam or distributing pills, this commission's first job is the welfare of its citizens. Styrofoam floating in the ocean or the intercoastal or in our rivers is not healthy for animal life, human life, and makes it disgusting. It's hard to get rid of. We would love to work with the company that manufactures it. We will bend over backwards to help them help themselves. But if they won't, be it known, the welfare of the citizens of this city comes first. And that's what you elected us to do, to watch your back. And that we will do. Anybody says we're not pro-business, we're more than pro-business, but not when it interferes with your welfare.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Drosky?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will, I will pile on this evening and congratulate you for the way that you are running your meeting, running our meetings and operating the city, because I hear, I'm out in the community on a daily basis, and I hear consistently how much better-run these meetings are than the previous administration. And although I wasn't part of the prior administration, I certainly sat in the audience and watched the meetings. It is night and day, and that is attributable to you and the way that you run these meetings. So, thank you very much. We are getting feedback out there from our various constituents on this. This is not, and we're only two months, can you believe it? We're only two months into this, and it seems like two years, but we're getting a lot of great feedback, so I attribute that to you. Thank you. Secondly, Commissioner Battle, I accept your invitation to the Wings this weekend. I will be there.
Thank you.
I will gladly participate. Third, I also want to thank the mayor for mentioning the improvements that Coconut Creek made to their, to their medians. It is night and day, but you know when you're in Coconut Creek and you know when you're in Deerfield Beach. And I understand that we've improved in the last year, but there's certainly much more room for improvement, and I hope that we can continue the progress that we've made. My next Saturday hours will be July 1st. Mr. City Manager, if that's a problem staffing, because it's close to a holiday weekend, let me know. I'd be more than happy to move it to July 8th, just let me know. But as of now, it's July 1st. I'll announce at the next meeting if I, if I need to move that. I also want to thank the City Manager and staff, Mr. Good in particular, for helping me with Broward County changed the signal timing at 28th Street and, excuse me, 28th Avenue and Southwest 10th Street. That's one of the main exits from the Waterford Homes community. If any of you have ever exited that way onto Southwest 10th Street, you will know that you wait an inordinate amount of time to turn either east or west onto 10th Street. And that is because the light was timed, a hard time, from midnight until 6:00 a.m. The sensor, excuse, the sensor did not kick in, excuse me, from, until midnight till 6:00 a.m. It was hard timed after that. Thanks to staff, we've been able to request Broward County change that, and they have. It's now 10:00 p.m. that this, that the sensor will kick in, so at least it's two hours of relief to that community. Maybe after time, which we show them that there's more of a need for it, they will change it. But Broward County at least gave us two hours to start. Maybe we can get a longer time period, because that is a long wait. At 10:00 o'clock at night, when there's nobody on Southwest 10th Street, you're just sitting there staring at the light. Trust me, I did it many, many times, and you're just waiting for that light to turn. So, thank you very much for helping me with that. And then, lastly, last Thursday was my code compliance town hall meeting at Constitution Park. It was a standing, literally a standing-room-only event. There were residents standing in the back. It was over two hours. It was a great dialogue that we had on code, code compliance. We even got off topic on a couple of areas, but that was good for the residents to ask the questions that they have. I want to have more town hall meetings in the future. My next one will probably be in the fall around budget time, so I can get input from District Four residents, as to things that they like and that they don't like. And if there's any issue specifics, I intend to have more town hall meetings. I like that format. I like the residents being able to voice their opinions and their concerns in a way that's comfortable for them to do it. It's, it's in a more, you know, comfortable environment, and they can say what they, what they want without the pressure of like a formal meeting that we have here. So, I intend to have more of those town hall meetings throughout my, throughout my term here. So, that's all that I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just a couple of things to let everyone know. Back in April, actually, this happened, but Deerfield Beach was ranked at number 20, the 22nd city in the United States as being to the, they did an online survey that basically to start a new business, we were ranked 22nd in the United States. The Wallet Hub looked at 1,261 cities with a population of 25,000 to 100,000, analyzed access to resources, business costs, and business environment. The analysis considered the number of small businesses, startups per capita, average revenue per business, average growth of business revenues, and varieties of business types, among other indicators. Deerfield Beach is the only Florida city to be included in the top 30, so that's, that's outstanding. And this week also, Realtor.com rated us nationally as the fourth cheapest beach town to live in. So, that's outstanding for us. So, I think, I think that's, I think that's outstanding for us. But I do want to remind everyone that we, I do have a Facebook page. It's Deerfield Beach Mayor Bill Gantz on Facebook. I encourage you to, you don't have to like it if you don't want to, but at least follow it, because the information is good. And it's already paying off dividends. We, I, you know, we have a lot of traditional ways for people to reach out to us, whether it be by cellphone, calling City Hall, email, and certainly my number has been out there for many years. But I did get a message through Facebook by somebody that noticed a depression in the roadway on 10th Street, actually, east of Federal Highway. And Mr. Good and through the City Manager was able to get staff out there to take a look at it. Turned out that we did have a pipe burst, I believe, underground that caused a sinkhole that was getting worse. So, it's already paid off dividends by being notified by that, so that's outstanding. The feedback has been, has been great, and so I really appreciate that. We also started our citywide crime alert, basically piggybacking on the old District Four crime alert, and we kind of took that away from you a little bit, Commissioner, but I appreciate the fact that you're willing to keep that going. But we've expanded this citywide now, so I encourage everyone to go to the city's website, sign up for it. We cannot sign you up. I think you have to voluntarily sign up yourself, much like our code red alert, you have to sign up yourself. But I encourage you to go to the city website and find the crime alert. It does cover everything citywide from, in all the districts that we have. And I encourage all of us to really think hard about our board appointments. The people that we put on those boards represent us, and they're a reflection on us. So, when you, when you put people on a board, make sure that you're putting the right people on a board. It concerns me when I hear about appointees that might be having their own agenda, that might be trying to break protocol and bring things forward on a board that is, that might be out of line. I don't think any action should be taken, but I think it's something that we need to be aware of and make sure that this doesn't get out of, you know, hand. We want to make sure that the people that are representing us on these boards are the right people and are representing us in the right way, and not trying to use their position on these boards to further a personal agenda on that. I will say, I appreciate all the nice comments. I can't say that the bar was set very high in order to have better-run meetings, but I will say that it's a team effort. And it is a real, I've sat up here for eight years, and I've worked with some really wonderful people. This is the most collegial body we've had up here, from every single individual. I thank you all for the support that you give me, and I hope you know that I support each one of you the same way, and it truly is an honor and a privilege. So, thank you very, very much. Very sincerely. I also want to thank our City Manager. That visioning session that we had yesterday, I think is going to bear great fruit for the city of Deerfield Beach. It was well-run. It was, I thought the organization was great, and I thank all of you for giving really good input on it. People like, looks, people are going to walk away from it and say, "Well, they didn't talk about this," or "They didn't do this," or "I wanted that." It's amazing how we can sit there for four hours, and yet, somebody picks out one statement that they didn't like. I'm sure there was a lot of great ideas that came out of that. Our job is to give a direction. Staff who are the experts in their fields are the ones that are going to tell us how to meet those goals specifically. We might have some specific situations that we want to see addressed, but I encourage you to go through, work with the City Manager, work with staff, inform them what those issues are, and that's how we're going to be able to achieve these things. So, that it, that's it.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and adjourn. We have a second. Are all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much, President.
Yes, I will. It might be a little late. That will be that.
Oh, awesome.
Have fun reading it.
That's good. We know, it's funny, I met with her about a sudden, she goes, "You're on front page."
And I remember Hannah Pollard, yeah, and she, and she told me that they got more hits than they ever anticipated, and they got meaningful in this story. She said that the headline actually had something to do with it, because they talked, they mentioned immigration in the headline. And what she did-